Good afternoon. Welcome back from recess and we're going to start with the Clickydat County Commissioners Budget Workshop. Thank you.
I am here. I'm stuck in traffic.
How far out are you?
About probably two hours with traffic, maybe a little more.
That's too bad.
Yeah, our meeting went long, but it was really good.
Good.
I'll let you bring it up.
And for the record, all three commissioners are available. We're here. Mr. Anderson is online. Mr. Christopher and Commissioner Zola are here in office. What are we gonna start with?
Okay, well, I figured we just kind of start with a little recap of where we are with expenses. And. Okay, is that better?
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. Okay. Without a good place to start would just be reviewing which general fund, the general fund departments and the amount over the prior 2024 budget. And just identify what those are, and if there's any big ticket items within there and just see where we're at as a whole. Before we move forward. So, I've added a new column here on this. Smart sheet. And. Sorry, Rob, but you know, I, IT is about $219,000 more over 2024's budget at this point in time. That's not super significant. Auditors non-departmental, 1.2, but we know those two things are those, that would be where the general fund insurance is being paid out of, which in the past had not been paid out of. And then the other big ticket item within there is the ERP transition. Which is fully funded. Okay, let's scroll on down. At this point in time, the jail, but we already anticipated that, about $500,000 over with this current budget, but that could be looked at and maybe added to as well. Next big one would be the sheriff's, sheriff's office without the jail added to it. That's about currently $700,000 over 2024's budget. 600 of that being in patrol. Planning Department, $276,000 over to 2024, but I believe now long range planner. Those.
Grant.
And the grant, yes, that's right. That's really it when it comes down to it. I don't know yet, but. Potentially, I haven't verified that. So we are through the workshops at this point in time, we've taken the 24 million down to 24.7 to 24.5. I believe that deficit is 2.5 at this point.
So did we make a decision for it to go back up? I thought we got it down to about 2.2 or 2.3.
Um, no, but there there could have been additions in there from workshop. I know that I had a request to add something in that you guys haven't, you haven't spoke to this office yet, and it wasn't much, but those adjustments have been happening. Trying to see if I could find it.
And the sheriff's patrol going up 700,000, that's partially because he, he added two new deputies into the wages, correct?
This is Rob, Jake, I think so. He, he talked to us about redoing his org chart with two boxes for two new deputies. So I think he's planning to discuss that with you probably as well as during his budget presentation. So I can't, I'm not sure, but I know he's talked to HR about two additional deputy positions.
Do you know the approximate on what that amount is?
I don't know what a cost of a deputy is.
Okay.
Easily with benefits and stuff, 100,000 apiece.
Okay.
I suspect.
I can.
Eighty, ninety thousand.
I can pull that up.
This ballpark figure.
Yeah, we're looking at 150 on average.
Okay.
332.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
That doesn't include the vehicles and everything else though, right?
Yeah, that wouldn't include their equipment. I don't know about the vehicles. I don't know what the vehicle count is, but I suspect that wouldn't count for uniforms and body camera and weapons and boots and all that kind of stuff.
My, my 150 number was high. They have them at 139.5.
Okay.
And that's with no overtime?
It's 120 hours of overtime built into that. Each.
Uh, and then does this also double dip because his budget has, uh, does this have the administration for the jail accounted both times?
Yes.
Okay.
I did not make any assumptions.
Right.
On this worksheet, and it appears that, let me, let me just go grab the admin and see what they budgeted for sure, but yes.
So when you say both times, Jake, just for people listening, you mean both in the new, the, the jail and the patrol of the sheriff's side, right?
Yes, so meaning the, the estimate or the anticipation is that the sheriff's chief jail deputy position that became a patrol, head of patrol that did not transfer over solely, it's, it's accounted for in two places.
Yes.
And that's 132?
I, I did, the, the jail commander wages are within the jail budget. Or a generalized number because I, I don't have the confirmed yet of what that would be.
So that would change that 700,000 to 832? Okay. And beyond the extra deputies, is there for consideration what, what's being asked for or paid for?
In the sheriff.
In that 832, what do I need to consider that they need? Hard to find all the differences without longer conversations.
There, there is one, one thing that I, I would like to bring forward, and, and this is something that I've had the conversation with Karen as well. Within the patrol budget, there, there's a portion of the patrol budget that is for the left medicals. And, and the left medical would be those left retirees that, that those left one retirees that we have to pay medical benefits and reimbursements on. I don't know why it ended up getting housed in the patrols budget when we have a left board budget. So I would like to propose to the board removing that bars number and line item from patrols budget and putting it in the commissioner's left board budget. It really, to me, to the auditor would make more sense. The, I believe it's Leanne who manages that. She's the one that really has the first look at what those invoices are going to be and what to expect, whereas the sheriff's department doesn't have that insight. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense that it's there. And I know that I did run it by Heather to make sure that there wouldn't be any hiccups with moving it, why it would be there and whatnot. And I believe she was in agreeance with me and moving that as well.
Has it always been under the commissioners?
No, it's always been under the sheriff's office and it.
We've talked about it multiple times. It's never made any sense and it's cleaner to pull it out and put it in its own.
Yeah.
Fund where it belongs and it unmuddies the sheriff's budget.
Yes.
So I can't imagine he's opposed.
Well, Karen was for it. I just, I needed board direction to go ahead and.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay. So.
And it's only $15,000, right?
Uh, no, it's 90.
And does that, and that money comes out of the general fund as well?
Yes, it does.
It is the left or is that part of the general fund?
Yes, it's, it's a general fund budget in, under, under the purview of the commissioners.
Okay, makes sense.
Which at some point we need to talk about that 90 and whether it needs to be 90, but just make a note of that when we get to it.
I think I already have notes because they, I.
Question, the same question.
I worked through some of, of what it might potentially need to really be.
Okay.
Because the left budget is the premiums and the actual out of pocket expenses. I think calculated those based on current premium rates and.
Current user rates.
Yes, and obviously as those change, that number will change, but I, we did look through it. I'm pretty comfortable with that number for this year.
I look forward to seeing what that is.
So everybody's okay with that. We'll just move on. I'm glad the clerks are okay with that too. Surprise ladies, sorry. Yeah, okay. So. It looks like. I mean, ultimately for, for the sheriff's department patrol, we really just want, we want to get as close to actual as just like the rest of the, the budget, or that I've heard the board say with the rest of the budget. So I mean, I see fuel budgeted at 183,025 versus the 167, oh, I'm sorry, 100, it was 100. So that's $83,000 more than 24.
24 budget or 24?
24 budget.
Right, but 23 actual was still higher than 100, right? So essentially, the board approved a budget for 2024 with a much lower fuel number than 2023's usage.
And in the boards.
To real accurate usage numbers. It's not like he's burning through more fuel. It's just the number in 2024 was a little wonky.
In the board's defense, the board's wouldn't, the board would not have known that that would have been the end number in, at the adoption time of the 24 budget because we, you would only see that six months.
Uh, we should also mention that Commissioner Christopher and I brought up the, what the sheriff's department had put in their budget for fuel, pointing out that they had put in an artificially low number to them.
Well, I, I wouldn't say that they put in an artificially low number because that's speculating. They did it on purpose. But I will say it was a lower number than expected.
I, I think there was a conversation too, and didn't we suggest they bump it up? And we did bump it up 20,000, I believe, last year.
I, I do recall it being a topic of conversation with the board last year and that, that the board added to that budget.
Right, I guess my point is it's not so much of the fact that is 2025 fuel numbers bad. It's that the 2024 fuel number was bad.
I hope it didn't come across that I said that number was bad. I'm.
No, I'm just trying to clarify for.
I'm pointing out what the.
The overages are.
Increases of that, of these numbers. The next one would be patrol small tool, oh my goodness, my things went wonky here. You know, the patrol's small tools and minor equipment is at 82,000 increase over 2024's budget.
82,000 increase?
They had budgeted 14,500 for 2024.
And then 82,000 for 2024.
The first half of the year's actuals for 2024 is currently said it was sitting at 87,000.
Wow.
And their 23 actuals ended at 77,000.
Was that underestimated or was it just something new that?
No, I don't, I don't, I'd have to go open.
Those are conversations we can have when they come in. Yeah.
Or it could have been they reduced the billing something to one bars number and were told that that's the wrong bars number, bill it to this one.
Nobody has Cananda open yet, so. Yeah, I'd really have to pull that bars number and see what the detail is in and that, and I could do that when you guys are deliberating about anything else, but. Yeah, firearms doesn't have a bud, it's budgeted a thousand really. So I don't know. Let that load and I'll go back to it. We have some decreases in budget in some areas. We pulled insurance out. It's really the the big ticket items and the other big ticket item is a vehicle rental rate. That one is significantly more than last year because we had, and that was a an issue really of we were trying to use up some other balances and I went too far with that. And so I had to, I have to add back into it just to make sure that we're staying more on an even keel, sustainable number going, going forward. So that is $200,000. In the prior years that we had, we had adjusted which items would have rental rates on them and pulled some items from their VRNR.
So if it's 200,000, is it 200,000 difference? I guess I'd say what is it now compared to whatever it was, what was it 23 and 22? If you're saying 2024.
Twenty, 22 was, or I'm sorry, 23 was 230,000 and it's 390 this year.
Dan, is your mic on?
No.
And did they include, increase the vehicle rental rate because they put two more deputies in there?
No, I increased it because I needed to get some balances up in some other groups, some future groups, so it wasn't such an impact in future years.
Did this change based on price of vehicle going from explorers to Tahos type of thing?
No, no, it's, it's it wa, it was really just making sure that.
We used too much fund balance and now we gotta pay it back.
I, I let different, the other two groups ahead drop a little too low. And so I want to make sure that we, we keep a more sustainable, like neutral number going forward each year. And I felt that this year would be better to do it than.
So not their baby, our baby. That's all.
That one.
Good enough.
I can adjust it. I just figured it was better this year to do it than a future year. Range deputy. The range deputy program. It appears that it's being budgeted with back at the two deputies. And I have to verify, it's just back up, it's up 60,000 from this year. That would be something that was talked about last year in regards to finding range deputies and, and I don't exactly remember the conversation, but with to the degree of detail, but it was my impression that if they couldn't find it, then some of the funding would be pulled, but it's budgeted with two deputies this point.
Do you know if the billings were ever done?
Well, they had, the positions haven't been filled, so they haven't spent anything. They've spent under $1,500 in 24 because there hasn't been somebody in there since the beginning of the year.
What was in that fund?
So it's it's really just the, the little bit of wages and the benefits associated with it, assuming a self loan for, for that little bit of time and whatever vehicle made.
Is that a dollar for dollar match? County pays half and they get half through?
No.
The, the third, Cattlemen Timber is supposed to pay a third. We just don't normally collect it very well.
And I, I've reached out and asked, I don't have for, I don't have a copy of the latest agreement, so I've, I've reached out to Karen to see if she can get me that. I'm still waiting on that. Because we did, we updated that agreement.
Yeah, I think they came in, and I think they did do some, some billings for land trusts, maybe.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
What do they have in that line for 2024 revenue so far year to date? I want to, I don't have a book open, but I want to say it was like 14 grand or something. I wasn't prepared to do the sheriff since it wasn't on our agenda, so I'm not quite ready and I'm scrambling.
That's all right.
I didn't do my homework.
We're just winging it right now because waiting for Sharon.
It's like it'd be a race. I can find it by book faster than you can find it on your computer.
There's, um, yeah, it was first half 4,600 or yeah, 4,600.
Oh, that's smaller than I expected.
Yeah, boy, that's way smaller than I expected.
What was the number collected for 23? Do you know that number off the top of your head?
I do not because it was put in a different bars number.
We collected money this year. What do we do? What do we do if we collect it and don't expend it?
Well, the rule was that they were supposed to collect it the year prior. So any money they got this year was attributed to next year's budget. And they were supposed to collect the one third before the commissioners ever budgeted the two thirds.
Gotcha.
That's not how it's worked, but that, that was the scope of the agreement. And I can't imagine that work. It's changed in the new contract, but I can see the new contract as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Because I can't imagine if there was a new actual contract that we wouldn't have it because we would have had to sign it. Because the original was signed by us at screen between the county and the.
Well, and I checked the contract log that I could see online.
There may not be a new, they might have a new allocation formula on their end, but I bet it ain't a new contract.
I would be surprised if there's not. Because that, I believe the one that we had was pretty outdated.
Yeah, I seem to remember when I was first seated, we went through that and they all came in. And then I thought we did a contract, anyone, and I remember it being signed by them and coming back.
No, that's really when I, okay, there's not a lot of big ticket items sitting in, in here that's out of the ordinary, I would say.
I know there was an explanation for the IT. What's that? Was that a grant that hadn't came in yet? Something that hadn't.
Uh, this is my fault. I didn't check with Randy before I came in here.
I, I know we'd heard that already.
I'm not sure. It's just one thing. It's just cost increases and.
Yeah.
Equipment stuff.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like the biggest one is equipment.
Overchuck.
And capital equipment. Which, and keep in mind when it comes to, I can remove that one. When it comes to the IT portion of the budget, we, as new software is coming up and online, we are trying to transition those subscriptions and annual, and those costs into the IT's budget rather than parsed out within individual budgets throughout the county, trying to get it all under the one umbrella.
And I doubt it includes releases new software yet because I think that came up after we.
It's true.
Oh, the first year.
But other than that, it's there's not much, it, it really attribute for everybody else, it, it seems to attribute to employer, employee costs. And then we can go over the schedule. So today we'll have senior services at 1:30. Public works will come in with buildings and grounds, their capital funds and Dowsport wastewater too. And then that public works usually takes about two hours for each of their sessions. And then adult probation will come in at 4:30. So we might have a little bit of a break there between public works. Courtney had some other things that she had to deal with, so she had to wait till 4:30. Then next week we have a full day. Um, starting with East District Court and Renee in the clerk's office, solid waste. The fair's going to come in. We'll do lunch, public works, we'll do the rest of their funds and then end the day with the sheriff. And at this point in time, I really, I only have two on the tent. Judge Krog was pretty limited. This was the only time he was available. If the board wanted to. Um if the board wanted to speak with Superior Court, the planning department. And then. The first half of the day on the seventeenth, the commissioners budgets and um HR and administrative services.
Why are we doing? Why are we doing commissioners on the seventeenth and not the tenth if they're on the tenth? Are we not ready for us or? That's a good excuse right there. We need to send Sharon a reminder or?
Mayor Kuwait is on.
Good morning, Mayor Catherine.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good to hear.
I wasn't sure if you guys were taking questions. Um is it okay if I ask a question?
Sure, we have a few minutes.
Okay, yeah, I kind of saw a lull and I thought I'd uh take the opportunity. So I have. I heard and I'm not sure if this is true or not, but um that the county might be doing some kind of. Um like either a levy or a tax for emergency services. Um, do you know anything? I I missed the I I apologize. I missed the first part of this meeting. Um but I was just curious if that's something that's being budgeted for there. And the reason why I'm asking is because. Um the city of Benjin was thinking about doing a level lifted lift in um two thousand and five. Um sorry, two thousand and twenty five next year. Um and. You know, obviously we want to know what's going on around us so that hopefully we can be successful, but um. It would be for paying for law, yeah, police and um fire response. So I just wanted to find out. Um from you guys what your plans are.
Good question.
Hi, Mayor. This is a this is Jen. Um the board just went through all the possible revenue sources as. As they were going through the budget and at this point in time, the board has not made a decision or um. Or really even.
A conversation.
A conversation about going forward with that. Our conversations were really just that this is an available resource that we have yet to um utilize.
Okay, okay, but as it stands now, that's something that maybe you guys will utilize in the future, but not necessarily. I just, I guess if if there's a chance that it comes on the docket for twenty five, it would be awesome to know a little bit more about that so that we can. You know, either work collaboratively or, you know, uh figure out the timing.
Absolutely. I I understand that and I and should this board make any moves. Towards that, I I will definitely let you know, but at this point in time, I I they have not.
Okay, okay. Cool. Thank you so much. Appreciate the information.
See you soon.
All right, bye.
Here's Sharon. You're done. No choices. We should get all away.
Thanks. Thanks for the money.
That's what happens. Either everything goes away when you're not there or you get assigned to everything when you're not there. Like, oh, yeah, they'll do it. We'll give it to them.
You didn't give me an extra five hundred thousand?
No, we gave you more work.
I can move over to actually here.
Good morning.
Morning or afternoon, I guess now.
Now, oh, it is. Cash. Not used to starting in the afternoon. So, okay.
So did you want me to just give a rundown of?
Sure.
Overall, okay.
Let me get just an update. That would help us.
Yeah, so um e- essentially, you know, my budget has two funds. Uh there's Fund One O Four, which is the primary senior services and Mount Adams Transportation Services. Operations and then Fund Five O Five is just the uh senior services, the vehicle repair replacement fund. And so um for twenty twenty five, I do have much of. Many of our contracts are the same. Um we've got our congregate and home delivered senior nutrition programs. We have um our disease prevention, health promotion programs. We have our aging and disability resource services and information and assistance, which is. Assisting people with um applying for various uh state and federal programs for assistance like with Medicare counseling. Uh related to uh programs and services as well as our assistance with um. People accessing things like the P U D senior P U D electric discount, um other discount programs and those kind of very year to year. We also continue to have what we call what is MIPA is referred to, which is the Medicare. Insurance Portability Protection Act, and that is something that will we're very busy come October through December. Uh assisting folks with Medicare to evaluate their plans for that upcoming year. Um which often has savings of several thousand dollars for individuals. Uh for their prescription drug plans as well as providing counseling related to the different options for Medicare and supplements. So that's. A lot of times that we also have our case management programs. So those are ones that were a subcontractor through with the area agency on aging and disabilities as well. So we provide um what's called Title Nineteen. Medicaid case management for people that are eighteen and older uh that are receiving in-home care services. And so. That one is a um per unit rate, caseload rate um that actually funds. The two case manager positions as well as I'm the case management supervisor, so I do some. Coverage work in that and some oversight and transferring in and out of files and and review of that program. So that does pay. Some of my salary as well. Um and then we also have um. The big portion of our budget now too is transportation. And so we have not only senior transportation, which we do get money from the area agency on, we also have um public. Transportation um and we're the we're still the main contracted provider for non-emergency medical transportation. For clients in. Clickitack County that are on Medicaid uh programs and need transportation to medical appointments. So we use. Those grants and contract revenues to match. Towards the match for our um public transportation grants through the Washington State Department of Transportation. And potentially for, you know, there are sometimes other federal or private grants that are available that we can apply for, but in twenty twenty five, we have. Primarily again, just continued funding through the Washington State Consolidated Grant Program. And then the new piece, which is showing an increase in revenue and expenses in twenty twenty five is. Is our application for the fixed route connector route to go between Lisle. So that's why you'll see there's um. Uh some increased revenue and expenses is adding that particular route. So that does not involve any county. Cash match, that cash match for those. That grant, which is going to fund a vehicle in the five O Five um budget and then operations in the one O Four budget. Is um that's coming from a CED uh because that was just a five percent match. They had a. Smaller match rate in this round, so we were able to manage that and that. And then the expectation that'll be a biennium grant, a two-year one. Um and if if uh the plan is over the next two years working. Again, to look at some other sources to get that match funds to continue that service. Um we also have uh another um case management um. Uh and service program that's called um MTP. Um and it's it's the Medicaid Alternative Care and Tailored Supports for Older Adults Program. That's a waiver program with the state also, and we receive. Funding. I did budget um twenty thousand, but it's looking like that contract actually might be closer to fifty thousand for. Twenty twenty five, so that isn't finalized. A number of these uh are based on what our past and. So we I don't know precisely what we're getting until we got um some of the. Updated contracts and and we end up with amendments. Often you just signed. This last week, like another nutrition amendment where they added some additional state nutrition funding for both home delivered and congregate that came about. Um so. Those are the I'm budgeting based on what I'm pretty confident about, but there's no guarantees with any of our. Funding sources because um it and especially with some potential changes in administration. Uh we don't really know what what happens in terms of um uh with because we get federal and state funds and there have been times that. There's been cuts across the board and then there's been times where there's been added funding. So. I'm pretty conservative in terms of what I'm anticipating we'll receive. And we did get an actual higher unit rate for Title Nineteen case management, but I'm but I'm still. Budgeting conservatively on that because the caseloads. Even though they've continued to increase in this year, I'm just still a little bit leery without having another year's worth of data to to look at. Gauging that a little bit higher. And so the one of the programs that um you know, the volunteer connections program. Did have a a staff position. Uh and funding and that funding, you know, ends uh this year and I haven't been able to locate another grant to substitute that. I do. We still are getting some small United Way money and um. And then we've also periodically received some support from SEEK to provide more um direct volunteer or. So we're continuing the volunteer connections program. It's just not as robust as we would like for it to be um. Because not having that staff person uh to do that, but um the funds that we're getting from United Way will will continue to help support like mileage reimbursement for. The friendly visitors and friendly helpers that we're having with the volunteers. Um and then uh as well as potentially. Um they've provided funds to purchase um equipment, you know, to help like with. Cutting big weeds down and and things like that. So those are the types of things that that support, but we do not have. So that was um, you know, about a hundred thousand for this year that that, you know, won't be ongoing. So I am continuing to look. For opportunities to be able to support a volunteer coordinator, but I have not been successful at this time.
And I meet with aging and disability tomorrow in Vancouver, so I'll bring that up. If anybody has an idea.
Yeah.
Where you can look for money.
We'll take some of their reserve.
Yeah, they they do really well. They're a good board.
So um and then. I don't know if there's any specific questions about uh so the only, you know, in terms of staffing. Um, you know, that we're eliminating, you know, there isn't that staff position that's on the org chart for the volunteer coordinator will not be present in twenty twenty five. And then uh our staff, uh we will need uh additional drivers for adding that additional route because that'll be. A whole nether route that will take, you know, uh a couple of full-time drivers and a a casual to to operate. So that was. That is planned in the budget with that funding to be able to operate that service. But those are.
How soon will they start that route, do you think?
So the hope would be to start us, uh you know, we would be able to use potentially an existing vehicle um. Knock on wood with. You know, issues sometimes with some of the vehicles that are aging, but um to get the service going because with it'll take time to get the. The new vehicle purchased. Um uh but I I mean, my hope would be able to, if we got, um usually they've. Let us know by June. And so I would hope that we could get some folks on boarded and start the service or even. We could use some existing to transition into that time that the funding would start July first typically. Um and so the the latest, I would say, to really fully. Get on board if we had some challenges with with recruiting uh would still be hopefully October, if not before. Did you have any questions or specific? I know there was some um comments kind of in the budget. Documents online about, I think there were some questions kind of about taxation, tax revenues and things to support transportation. And so one of the things that um, you know, there are some options, you know, there there have been and I have just kind of. Again, from and I put some responses in there about. So so currently we're not really a true, we're not like a transit agency. So when they say we're uh we are. Doing transit and we're operating services, but we don't fall under the umbrella as being like a formal transit agency. So. In one sense, we don't have access to some pots of money and and resources, but on the other hand, too, we don't. There's pieces that go along with when if you are going to be a trans a formal transit agency and there is. There is the ability, you know, as a county um to be to establish. One, um just a transportation benefit district or to be a county um transit. Uh public transit uh. Authority, um but then that involves boards and that, you know, and some of what um. When we provided an update uh earlier kind of about the gorge transit strategy and some of the discussions and things that are going on and then the the plan. In this upcoming year in in meeting with the various uh author, you know, uh. Uh oversight entities for existing transportation in the gorge was to kind of talk about. What potentially some of those options are um to even look at a. A way to have it more even gorge focused so that. Because we tend to be able to leverage greater resources when it's by state and regional versus just kind of siloed. And so I think it would make sense to kind of see um as, you know, through some of those meetings and that planning um. Uh because there was, you know, a PTBA back in um, I think I said it was ninety. Back in the, it was before my time, there was a vote, it was nineteen ninety eight. Um they did. Form a Clickitack County Public Transportation Benefit Area to explore developing public transit in Clickitack County. But um so there was a basically a vote that passed, but then the actual tax. Did not pass. So it's kind of like what's happened, I think, with some of the recreational districts is that. People vote to say we want this, but then when it, you know, when. People vote to say we want this, but then when it, you know, when there's a tax piece. So there are, you know, there are about, I think. Five counties that do have. A PTBA, I think only one of them actually has a tax because you can. But it not have the tax associated with it. And they do use and it's usually, I think it's it's like plate. Your plate renewal, there's like an added fee that they can do for that and or. Certain tax. And so there is some more information that could be discussed in, you know, potentially in detail on that, but. In previous discussions, it's usually been. A no because of the tax piece. So. I think there's, there are some, again, some things that are looking in terms of whole gorge transit strategy. That might be able to, again, access some more resources and funding. For transportation.
And I sat in on quite a few of those meetings and my concern for us was we're so focused on our seniors. And I like that, the services we provide for medical. And for shopping and stuff, and it seemed like if you became involved, then we're more obligated to open it up to the public. And that was a concern for me that we might dilute our regular program if we become engaged.
Well, what I see in terms of benefits that we're recognizing with. Having the fixed route transit service too is that. It it is a bit, you know, in terms of cost savings and and we. You know, emphasis is still being accessible, you know, so we have. We do have people that though are seniors and that too and disabled folks that are capable of still riding. Public transport and and enjoy the freedom of having more options because the the issue with. The dialeride transportation service is. One, you know, you, we have to be somewhat restricted because there's such huge demand for. You have to prioritize a lot of medical needs and the funding, quite honestly. Isn't present to really support. Because, you know, we we already see the challenges with. How expensive it is for us to, you know, we're taking people to specialists and things out of the area because there aren't the specialists in the area. And so you're really. Serving less people with. The money. And so I think there's still a need for both. There's the need for the dialeride service to do to the door through door help for people that that really need that. Want on more of that assistance. And then there's, but there's a lot of huge benefits just socially even for, I know, like at. At the White Salmon City Council. Meeting when we did a presentation, we had it four seniors came and talked about how they love. Having the fixed route service that they actually started using at first out of necessity because there was an issue with driving. And then. Once they were released, they said, well, they found that it was actually. Better for they enjoyed riding it that opened up some other opportunities for them and it was saved money because they weren't spending the money on gas and that. Was because the passes were pretty cheap. So I feel like we're getting benefits on. All ends and anytime we can expand. Transportation options, that's going to help seniors. I mean, and that's. Part of why transportation, you know, started and seen is and is within our department versus elsewhere and and those are the grants. Really that that we've been. Able to access through. Washington State Department of Transportation as well as the Federal Transit Administration are ones that. Are geared towards, they do have grants that are still geared. To really focus on elderly and disabled and special needs individuals. So. So that will always be a priority, but I still think. The more we have available, the better.
And it did look like it would give you those extra connections like to Lyle and up to Clickatap. And Glenwood and around where we aren't doing some of that. They were planning some of that where we.
Yeah, I mean, and it all comes down to. Resources to to make that happen too, so. But currently, the dialeride service is available throughout the county. It and it's, the issue is sometimes availability, you know, people are calling and we're we're booked out several weeks. For appointments, so.
Do you have questions, Mr. Christopher?
I only have one. As most your county, your most your money is grants, the only. Thing I curious about is the county funds, which you have it in your memo that three hundred and ninety thousand of normally solid waste revenues. As grant match, I would love to see a breakdown of. How much match for how much grant? Which grant, you know, is is. Fixed drought takes twenty grand of match and dialeride takes eight grand of match and meals takes twenty-two grand of match or whatever. In that regard, so I actually know what the. The funds are actually giving use for.
Yeah, and I could. I can do a, you know, some of it I would say is is paying though too for like my wages and that too. We, you know, some of the challenges. So we have administrative expenses that get allocated to the different grants and programs too. So.
This this just adds these funds to provide match in order to receive one point seven million. So I was just kind of looking at what 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 matching parts.
Yeah, and so I can look at doing a breakout to show you where some of the more and that it can vary.
Right, I just think that would be educational that if the board was thinking about. Removing bus service or something, they realize that they're only paying. You know, ten thousand dollars for all the bus service that we get, kind of a thing. So I think that is a very knowledge. Thing that this board or next board should probably know before they make a decision. On anything, but that's just me.
Yeah, and I've broken it out. Excuse me.
Oh, I was just seconding Commissioner Christopher's statement that I would appreciate that break out as well.
Other than that, I I nothing I found in there other than it didn't look like you, it looks like you. In your notes, say from solid waste revenues, but then in the actual budget. Stuff. It looks like you, oh, I got it, no. It it looks like for next year you have proposed two fifty, so I was trying to figure where the other.
It's broken out into two separate, yeah, there's the transportation.
I I figured as much, but I didn't dig far enough into it. But that was all I had on this budget.
Yeah.
Chair, you're in a meeting.
I don't have any other. I didn't know if you were done or Jake. Do you have any other questions? Good.
No other questions here.
Continue on.
Anybody else?
Doing great things, which I always tell you you're doing, so. Keep, keep doing them.
Yeah, that was easy.
That was, yeah, okay, so I will. Work on one that gets allocated by program service.
Even if it's, even if it's only ballpark kind of a thing.
Yeah, well, and I've done those in the past before. With the home care and all that kind of thing. It's just. Yeah, and then it can change through the year, like when we get some extra. If we get extra nutrition money, sometimes we then had to not had to use the county funds that we anticipated. So. And that's. Why there is some fund balance in my department because there's usually not. I'm usually on the corner asking for money. So, yeah. So COVID actually provided. Coverage over quite a bit, but that's changing. So. Okay.
Thank you, Sharon. Good afternoon. So you ready?
We're good.
Good.
Oh, okay, we have a set piece of argument. It'll take a few minutes for Seth to pass out all the stuff. We're gonna start with buildings and grounds. We're gonna go buildings and grounds. Cap. Three oh six, three oh five, one thirty-one will mention in there. I know, I I got this card, trust me. I got Tootsie Roll story I could break out. You'll love it if I break the Tootsie Roll story. The Tootsie Rolls. Pam hates the Tootsie Roll story then.
Yep. Don't bring me Tootsie Rolls. You can give them to Rob or I'll believe anything. I don't know, maybe not Tootsie Rolls.
Do we give that to everybody?
Tootsie Roll guy, oh damn, see. I was right, I was trying to give you the benefit of the doubt that you were saying, but it's there's no sanity there if you're eating Tootsie Rolls. Like black licorice too, what about black licorice? Okay, you get part credit there.
No Tootsie Roll in there either. Ready anytime.
Go right ahead.
Okay, we're gonna start with buildings and grounds. So we have followed the rule or the initiatives. Told to us, we've kept the. Status quo from last year, with the exception of utilities. Which we went up approximately five percent. We did that by looking at our our utilities at the time. And seeing what was proposed and everything and and averaging them out and that came up to five percent. So that that was our first submittal. We've looked at the numbers since then. And we made some adjustments, added to some, took away from some. And that, of course, this is the first sheet, let me explain. This is the first sheet we have here. On the back of that's the revenues, which we'll talk about that later. We handed this. Okay, this sheet here for everybody. Is how the main categories, what the main categories are. Like supplies, what is covered under supplies, like janitorial supplies, office supplies. Small equipment, miscellaneous screws, bolts, lawnmower supplies, maintenance supplies. Irrigation, all keys, all that stuff. Rentals and leases is machinery rentals, propane tanks, anything we rent. Small tools are just that, small tools. Insurance, I think we've taken that out of the budget this time. Yes, we have. So that's just a blank line item. Professional services are software updates, annual carpet cleaning. Lemay shredding. Some audiogram testing and that's also where we house the camp host wages. And then, of course, utilities, there's a list of those. I won't go through those communications. Cell phones. That type of thing, Century Link. Of course, repairs and maintenance, that's where we cover most of our contracted services. HVAC, snow plowing, alarms, elevator generator. And other things, backflow testing, they seem to get more and more of that. L and I and then miscellaneous L and I certs and of course we have fuel, newspaper advertising. Does anybody have any questions before we keep moving forward?
Glacier Springs, is that Glenwood water? Is Glacier Springs?
Trout Lake.
Like, okay.
Trout Lake water, yes.
That's a personal browsing the new sheets.
Okay, so. With that, I'm gonna tell you some things that are coming down in the future first, before I forget them, so I didn't write them on my list. One of those things as of twenty twenty-six. We will be required to meet certain thresholds for our buildings. It's a state mandated. New mandated law. We are type two buildings, not type one. Type one has to start in twenty twenty-five. Type one or fifth over fifty thousand, type two or twenty to twenty, twenty to fifty thousand, which means we have three buildings in that category. What does that mean? That means public works has to track. So when a Pam's person. One of Pam's staff will spend a lot of time tracking utilities and we don't meet a certain threshold. We'll have a certain time to make to meet that threshold. For energy savings and that kind of thing. We looked at a grant. To do that, that you had sent. It's tier one buildings we don't qualify. We are actually in the process of applying or working with WASAC to get. Something because we actually have to bring a grant to bring somebody in that actually has to evaluate all of our buildings. Oh, those three buildings, sorry, not all of our buildings, those three. Okay, so let's go, let's go into, I think we go into what we talked about before. No, we've got to keep moving on. We're not gonna be afraid. Okay, so. We'll hand out the other sheet, I think. So what we did is, like I said, we evaluated stuff. So we looked at some things and we have, one of our personnel is already said he's going to be retiring. At March, April. He's the person that runs the firearms training center. At that point, we'll look at contracting the firearms training center out. What does that mean? With that, there's a net savings of about forty-seven thousand dollars. So what we did is, and you'll see that on the new sheet, and before I go through it, I'll let Seth get that all passed out. You will see a new line item. I'm talking to the two commissioners here first. And I apologize, Commissioner Anderson is not available to see these numbers. But you will see. Where it says new twenty twenty-five budget. Those are the new proposed numbers. On on the sheet Seth just handed out. So you will see the difference at the bottom. Our original budget was one, five, six, two. Our new proposed budget is one, five, one, nine. We can explain why some went up and some went down. I want to make sure everybody has stuff so they can all follow along. Okay, the savings, of course, is not paying the salary to that personnel. Overtime wages, we have found our overtime wages, we just. Yeah, we will talk more about this later, but we have some stuff that we have not. Due to budget constraints have not been able to keep maintained, so our callouts are becoming more. So we found that, that's why we went to fifteen over ten. Benefits. The benefits just keep going up. And we add, so we added another ten there. We actually reduced office supplies by five. Everything else. Professional services, we raised to fifty because ultimately. The other thing that goes in there that I don't have on this list for professional, one, we found snow plowing, wages are going way up. And we also have window cleaning. We haven't been able to afford to do that. That's approximately fifty thousand or, yes. Fifty thousand dollars. Or no, 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 it's ten thousand dollars, sorry.
Say.
Ten thousand, but that's for three buildings.
I I'm gonna quit right now and go on the wish window washing business.
No, 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 I was, I was thinking of you though, just in case.
You're gonna work three days a year, it'll be great.
Yeah, exactly. No. Ten thousand, I misspoke, good catch. Let's see, and we looked at the utilities again with better information. We're proposing that, we're hoping to stay there. And that's kind of where we are. There's any questions on that? If not, we will move on.
Well, you're you're trucking right along, hoping that nobody has any questions, comments, concerns.
I'm okay with it.
I guess I'll bring it up. I'll probably get annihilated all over Facebook in an hour for bringing it up, but you know, somebody's got to be responsible. How much of our buildings and grounds overtime wages is being called out to do work for groups that are using the fairgrounds that aren't doing their part? In the fairground. So I guess I would say when they get done with their event and they leave a bunch of trash all over the place. We gotta go pick it up for them. And technically, I believe it's in the contract that they get. And technically, I believe it's in the contract that they get billed for our staff hours. Are we billing for our staff hours?
We are, we are, good call, uh, however, the call, eh. I'll just, we'll cut right to the chase, I know you.
I like, I don't like BSing, I like straight.
Okay, so, the, the majority of the callouts go to the sheriff's department? And go to nine.
Oh, for fixing block toilets and whatnot, you know, come?
To the, at the jail, they go to the jail, so I shouldn't say the sheriff, that's my mistake, the jail. The jail and dispatch gets their fair share, keeping in mind, those are twenty-four hour, seven day a week building.
Well, and there's not anything I can do about that, I'm more questioning, how much is there for? Uh, demolition derby, fair, home and garden show.
We bill those people.
As long as you're telling.
Yes, we, oh no, we keep track, we bill them, no. They pay for our overtime, we track and bill, however, Pam will kick me under the table. We still.
Watching her feet the whole time.
We still have to budget for those hours, regardless if we get paid or not.
I just wanna make sure you're getting.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Why I'm seeing more overtime and no revenue to make up for.
No, 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 but it really, that we get paid for, but the overtime we're seeing. A lot is with those two facilities. Does anybody have?
Do we budget any revenues on the backside of that for callouts? Sorry, like the fairgrounds.
Yeah, we budgeted under the fairgrounds revenue. Um, and I'll speak to revenue real quick before we move on, I just wanted to talk about expenses, and on the back sheet is revenue. Um, we found an interesting thing, we're not sure, before we make it, we're, I don't wanna make it, uh. Our revenue at Trout Lake Park is actually down. Even though we raised rates, now that doesn't necessarily mean people aren't paying, or doesn't necessarily mean we scared people away. Keep in mind, there was a fire there this year, so we may have lost some, so we only have one year of numbers. So, that doesn't always tell a story. And then you'll see the rest of them and. I don't know, I think they're running pretty close to what we've been seeing. On a linear basis, you'll see we have them through twenty nineteen.
So, I guess I'm gonna jump ahead and, and, and hope you can ballpark these right on, I have to look through your book, that, that's hard for me to. Determine what's buildings and grounds, what's road and what's gun range, and there's thirty-five pages in there all stacked together. What is our O and M expense for the gun range compared to the revenue of ten grand? I figured she'd be able.
Oh, yeah, Pam always has everything.
Yeah. One of the reason I usually put tabs in my book, so I can tell where gun range is and where. Range deputy.
Okay, we'll look at twenty-three, we had a revenue of fourteen grand, total expenses of eighty-seven.
Total expenses of eighty-seven, so it costs the county seventy grand a year to run the gun range.
That's why we have the save, we're having the save, we're proposing the savings.
Of seventy grand?
No, not seventy grand, can't do all seventy grand, well, but we proposed more than the forty-seven you're seeing, but remember, we had to raise the other categories to keep up. So, we had other things. If there's no questions on the buildings and grounds. Oh, do you want us to submit the new stuff to Jen, thank you.
Eventually, it's gonna have to be in the book here, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good to know. That, we're coming to that. We're coming to that in a minute, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay. No, no.
I think that's on non.
Yep, that's on, uh, we. So, we, we actually cut it in half, Jen's moved us on, which is good, thank you, we're moving on to non-capital.
Basically, you gotta move on to copy machine ink fees, and that's definitely going up.
It is, it is.
Brings a two-handed box in here.
I can tell the Tootsie.
We don't have any photographs today. Not yet.
We're going too fast. We have pictures today too.
I was asked, I just asked Seth that.
We like to have all kinds.
Look, here they come. Thank you.
I better not have anybody injured here, Van Leeve. That's true, if somebody trips and falls, you're, the accident report's on you. Wait till next week.
Till next week.
We're doing PowerPoint presentations. That's not where we're. Yeah, we're not. Okay, are we ready to get started? Okay, let's get started. Okay, you will see this time, two sets of non-capitalist, one says first draft. So, what we do when we sit down to do the non-capital list, because the non-capitalist is the list that repairs. Our facilities.
One says first draft, I'm still stuck it, one says first draft.
Yes, okay, well, the top one says first draft, do we not give the top one first?
We did.
Did, does.
Does it say first draft somewhere?
Yes. Did we not give him first draft?
He doesn't have.
He doesn't have first draft.
Oh, there's another one over here, got it.
Okay, we only have two drafts, so one says first draft, one doesn't say anything, so. So, what we do at the first, what I've always been taught. Yeah, that's okay, sorry about that. Way to go, Scuro.
Why are we paying the big bucks?
Okay, get that in there. Okay, so, um.
He's trying to confuse me early. That's shell game.
Uh, so, what we do. When we, when we sit down to do this, and especially this, because it is a repair plan. People get confused when they hear non-capital, this is what keeps our facilities functioning. Uh, so, we look at it and we, we have the whole list of wants and needs, and so, with. Uh, budget constraints, we go to the, we, we really look at the wants, or the needs, sorry, the needs. So, the list has been made up, the first list was made up in needs, keeping in mind until budget constra, our list used to be three hundred to three fifty. A year, we also have lost buying power due to inflation. So, what that meant is, when we went through this list and we started here, we're like, you know. It, we're losing ground, so I'm, I'm gonna get to this, that's enough bad news for the time being. So, the first, the first draft, the second draft, you'll see is what's left, and I highlighted the first draft, the stuff we took out. To get to the two fifty. So, for instance, we took out the installation of the cabinets for the jury room, why is that? That's not a big deal, but part of your match for, we'll talk more about this later, but. Part of your match for the painting of the, uh, courthouse is. The remodel of the jury room and the judges' chambers. So, instead of just us paying cash, we actually get something out of it, and we can do it cheaper than paying the three hundred thousand. So, that we, we push to next year. Um, floor covering rotation, this is in the Pioneer Center, I'm on page two. Um, the floor covering in the Pioneer Center really, really needs to be upgraded, but. We don't have the, you know, to push it back, because to get to the two fifty, we had to push something back, so we went with that. Um, because there's, you might have tears in the carpet, it doesn't look the greatest, but we don't lose anything. Um, and then the.
It's not a tripping hazard or anything.
It could be, it could be, but we're not to quite that point. The parking lot, cracked ceiling and B S T, parking lot's starting to show. Quite a bit of war here, has some cracks, there's not a good base underneath that. Uh, we kinda hem-hawed about this one, Milleran and I spent two and a half hours going through this back and forth and back and forth. Um, at first, we kept it on, then we came back and said, we can't do that, we gotta take it off. And we'll get to why on certain things, ADA installate.
Before you jump all the way down there. Uh, can we stay up at the West End Building, what is the upgrade landscaping?
That is, that is the landscaping that has gotten out of control and looks miserable down there, we've had numerous complaints. Uh, so.
Just calling a gardener to come in and whack back bushes kinda thing?
No, uh, it's past that point, because we haven't been able to do that. It's runaway, I think Commissioner Zoller has seen it and has offered to go down and help us. But it, it's past that point of cleanup. It's, the plants are either far out.
Hey, so what is this, rip it all out and redo it?
Rip it out, redo some of it, some of it, we're gonna turn to concrete, some of it, we're gonna turn to rock, we gotta make it less maintenance. And, you know, we've had that on, we can have the discussion on which, you know, you would, you would prefer here in a few minutes, too. Um, but that is one of them, there's a fence in there, I, that we kept, the reason we kept that is it's security, it's a safety reason. It sits right around the back wall and it's dilapidated, the existing split rail fence. So, some kid walks down and they can literally fall off of our wall. So, we need to put in, we're gonna replace that with a black vinyl chain link fence instead of split rail. That was built for aesthetics, not for practicality. Um, and the exterior, we need to finish that. Um, the ADA installation, uh, doors, there's three of those that need to be put in. We're only gonna do, the fifteen thousand is because I split that, we're gonna just do the one that's broke. We literally have one and, um, I'm surprised, uh, Sharon hasn't strangled us yet. We have one that, but it isn't as simple as I send somebody down to fix it.
So, it's on that south side?
Yes, it had, it needs to be replaced. Um, and those are not a cheap thing, um.
And with red, does that mean that number's changing as well?
Yes, that means it's changing, we split it off, we put five in one side and then ten in the other. I'm going through this and then on the other list, you'll see where we came to the fine. Uh, gates for indoor raid, riding, while I know they really want that. Again, I had something, again, I have to cut somewhere. Contestant gate, this one bug, we went back and forth on this one, we decided, again, it's not gonna get any worse, it's an eyesore, it looks terrible, but. Um, announcer's booth, another one we looked at, it needs some minor repairs, because it's starting.
Sorry, can we back up one more time? Beer garden bleachers, ADA requirements, can you, uh, explain to me what that's going to entail?
Yes, I can.
I bring that up is because I had numerous people. That couldn't get to the top, because everybody was sitting fully wide around the bottom, and they're like, can you at least like paint some strips in there that says, don't sit here? Or something, so you can actually get up and around people, but that's why I bring this up.
That's, I gave you some pictures. And the, here, these are the ADA bleachers, or the beer garden bleachers. It's more than, we call it ADA because we're required, we right now have a temporary. Um, occupancy, we do not have a final occupancy. We didn't have the time nor the dollars last year to finish the project. It needs to have a ramp. Supposed to have a ramp and ADA, because we, that's just part of the process. So, we did that, but if you look at this picture here.
Scary.
This is what's sit, this is what it's sitting under, now it's sitting under concrete ever so often. But if you look at the first picture, doesn't really show, the, the boards are starting, are been bowie. We replace those almost every other year because they go bad. We need to put good foundation under there. Again, that, the reason we move that is, is because we keep kicking that can, we'll use, uh, Commissioner Christopher's favorite saying, kicking the can. We keep kicking the can, then we essentially, um. We, we're, until this thing, if, if it falls apart, we shut the bleachers down because it becomes a hazard.
I'm kinda chuckling, because I've lived here eight years and I've been at the fairgrounds nine thousand times and I've never been. Time I've seen.
See, you get to see the beer garden, look at you. Oh, here's the fence, here's the gate, I, I gave you a picture of the gate too. The contested gate. That's also here, you see the condition. Not in the greatest shape. Um, again. Uh, could it get worse? Yeah, probably could, but, I, again, we have to make, we have to make cuts somewhere. To get to the two fifty.
Yeah, but again, it's like a hundred and fifty bucks or something.
That gate, no, I wish it was a hundred and fifty dollars, what do we have it, I think we have it at ten.
Ten grand for that gate.
Yes, it's wrought iron. It's wrought iron and we gotta fix all the chain link fence and re-put the post.
Why does it need to be wrought iron for ten grand?
Well, it has to be secure, we gotta put, we, I mean, that's been.
It's only secure is the chain in a pair of snips.
Well, that's the problem, if you're gonna do it, you, we put a regular gate, so it does work good. I mean, it's been, that, the reason it's like that is because it should have been fixed years ago, to make it right.
I, I don't disagree, but ten grand for a gate is.
Well, we gotta also reset the, the footing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't shut.
So, you gotta dig all that out, reset it, repave it. Or we'd probably put it in concrete, but it's, it's to do it right, it's around.
Your pier blocks a little.
Yeah, exactly, so, um.
Long as you put a placard with the commissioners that sign off on that project right outside of there, so the people know who to bitch at.
Yeah, hang on, hang on, I make sure that's what we have it on there for, but I don't know. I think it was ten, wasn't it? Yes, it was.
Next question I always get, send the picture, why have we not ripped out all the old. Race track arena. Stuff that's in there and is never gonna get used again.
Uh, because it's a project, and that one usually gets, it's been, it gets, it's been on the list forever, it's still on the list. It gets kicked because it's, again, it's a project, we gotta take it all out. You'll regrade it, do something with it, then we gotta, then we gotta actually build something that shows that we used to have a racetrack there. So, it's a little more than just taking it out. Um, so, to kinda quickly finish. The livestock barn door, uh, we pushed out, small bleachers, that one was, actually was one of the easier ones to push out. The gate opener for dispatch, that one was much more tougher to push out. And trout lake fence replacement. And then Dallasport Community Center, smoke alarms and, um. And, uh, HVAC replacement, because we have to spend, we have to spend thirty, I gave you another picture. Of Dallasport Community Center, this is the ceiling at Dallasport Community Center. The second page is the hole, when the ceiling tiles fell out at Dallasport Community Center. This is a grid ceiling, they're suspended by each, the, the whole structural integrity of this ceiling is they all interlock. Once one starts falling, they all could come down, this is blown in insulation, so, we do not. We need to replace that, that ceiling. And that kinda covers what I have on the non-capital. Um, I do have.
What is the, replace small bleachers with metal bleachers, maybe you went through that faster than.
Yeah, we moved that out, what that is, is we have a lot of those wood, green wood bleachers.
Oh, um, over by the nine one, where the nine one one people hang out.
And some of them are in states of ill repair, so we keep it, we don't wanna end up with having to buy a ton of new bleachers. So, we try to schedule that in, we have, we keep pushing it out, we've been pushing it out, we pushed it out again. We have bought some of the metal bleachers, they weather better than the plastic one, or the, the wood ones. Uh, but again, we, uh, that, I think the theme to this is, is a lot of times when we do. Uh, but again, we, uh, I think the theme to this is, is a lot of times when we do this. We're just, we just continually push the projects out. Every year they just go out. Because we get new stuff that is more dire. And takes the place of. So.
What's wrong with the dispatch gate opener?
It has issues when it gets windy and has issues with the snow. It has a tendency to stay open. It's better than it staying closed, but it stays open. And then we, so we've looked at it numerous times. The only way to fix that is to replace it. Um, we've tried to fix it. It's in the, it's in the system itself. The wind messes with it and then it just, and the snow does the same thing. So again, I'd be more than happy to add more to the list.
What, what are you doing with the improved arena surfaces? Hauling out dirt, bringing in new dirt?
We're bringing in material. Yeah. The reason we, that we've done is we were inundated during. You know, we've been asked by numerous people to do something with the arenas. And we've done something. It's been about 10 years ago. It's about time we do it again. So we'll add a little material to it, to the arenas.
Not taking anything out, just.
Yeah, we'll probably just dump it in and, and level it, grade it, that type of thing.
What's the Wishram Park tree removal?
The dead cottonwood that. That's, that's in Wishram Park.
Those are bad.
What?
They always go bad.
I know. And you know, uh, that was one of those. I wish we had a little more money this year. We would just take the tree down. Because it's really not the greatest thing. I have a big cottonwood standing dead. But that's something we will attack like January first.
If you were forced to uh, reduce uh, your non-cap by fifteen percent, which projects would you take up?
I, I'd have to think about it honestly, because we've cut. We cut it by over fifty percent, oh, a hundred percent of what we should do. So we would, we, I don't know, we'd have to really look at it. I mean, I can't take the tree. I couldn't cut this. So a lot of this, I'm to the point where. You know, you'd be looking at a higher dollar item, so. I, I mean, uh. I can't take anything off the court or the courtroom because that matches our grant. And if I do, I lose the six hundred thousand from the grant. So, um, I gotta get to the list, the real list, not that list. There, because the second one is the real list for everybody. I was just going through the one of how we made the cuts. So to address that, I mean, we would probably take the landscaping off. We've heard a lot, but you know, again, we could probably live with that. Um. I don't know if I would recommend anything else, honestly.
What was the fairground lighting again?
That is a project for lighting that comes through the fair board. That's, uh, there's additional lighting.
Outhouse, I mean.
No, no, additional lighting in the, um, fair area. I, and it's, it's not just for the fair board to be for other. It's pretty dark in between the exhibit building and uh, the fair, the grandstands. So we'd be looking at putting additional lighting.
Lake Street lights, kind of a.
Yeah, that type of thing.
How many of those are you putting? Only putting them in before the exhibit building and the, how many are we talking there?
Well, there's some other light, there's some other electrical that'd be involved in that. Another outlet and some other, we just put it under, we call it lighting. Because that's the majority of the project, but we got to run conduit and everything else, and we don't get to do that. We pay. Uh, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour or whatever they charge the electrician charges.
And what was the storage building?
Storage building is a facility to put our materials. What?
A new build, not an existing repair.
No, it's not an existing repair. It's a small building that we have materials for that we've saved from our projects. We, except for we need a foundation and that, but it's, we'll store our wood and stuff. That now we're storing outside, so we're losing that.
Where, where are you planning on putting that?
Uh, we'll put it back by the other storage facility. It'll come off the end of that. That gives us our ability to store metal, wood and all that in there. So now in the winter time, we bring it in, lay it on the floor in the shop, it gets stepped on, broke. And we end up losing some of our trim wood that we can, because some of the grants. You know, they end up packaging, you buy the full package and you may not use everything and then we can reuse it.
And what was repair grandstands, south side?
Repair grandstands. I have a picture for that.
I see you bugged through things so fast.
No, no, I skipped those because we didn't take them out, but you have a picture of the south side of the grandstands. This has been pushed off for years because we. I, I can't recommend doing that anymore. If you look at the pictures, you see the doors, you see the rot in the bottom soon. So the siding is gone. We'll soon be into the structure of the building. We've put a lot of money into this building. We put a new, a half a million dollar roof on this, on the top of this thing. We've done, you know, all the rest of this stuff and then to let the last side rot on us is probably not a good, good plan.
Yeah.
You ever looked at the giant gap in the window of the fair office that I told you about? It's like this wide between the two panes of glass.
You know, I forgot.
Probably should look at that.
Forgot about that.
It's the sidewall that uh, has the, where they do the stage over there.
Uh huh. So yeah, we, you can walk around the fair and still see a lot. Those are old buildings.
So what are you, what are you doing for the thirty grand?
What we're doing.
Siding or just putting on some gutters? What do you?
No, no, we're replacing the siding. So what we're going to do is pull all the old wood siding off. Plus that gets us a door. We'll bury the electrical that you see that's all over the side. That'll, that'll be encased. We'll fix the corner of the roof that's been damaged over the years. And so that thing will all be sided and, and metal, just like, so then it's. Lot less maintenance and it's a more of a permanent fix or it is a permanent fix. And, and then none of us in here will ever touch that thing again.
Promises, promises.
Outside of maybe pressure wash.
Somebody will drive into it.
We hope not.
Okay. Good answer to all my questions.
What's this one called? Protect bus light?
Uh, that's, that's further down the list. That's in a couple of years.
I didn't look at anything past this year.
What, what it is, is there's a bus, there's a light that the buses keep backing into at the Pioneer Center. Um, that's another one that we wanted to do sooner, but we push off. Just because, um, and eventually they'll knock the bus. They'll probably, hopefully they will quit backing into it, but where it's located. It's a pretty good chance it's going to happen and eventually they'll knock the light down. Luckily it has a pretty good foundation, but if you go up to the Pioneer Center and look out there, you could see it. It's leaning like the. Uh, leaning tower of Piesel.
Where are you planning on putting the water bottle filling station?
That is a requirement. You got to start it early, so thank you. Um, at, at the, probably in the grandstand, uh, under the, or you know, right by the door when you walk under the grandstands. We haven't made a decision.
Inside a building and.
No, outside the.
Outside the building on, on, on that wall, maybe.
Yes. Because we are required to have those now.
Oh, I've been saying it for years.
Yep. Yep.
We've got them at West End.
Well, that one goes in today or this, not today, sorry, this year.
Okay.
So we put one in the courthouse, put one in the Pioneer Center. The last place where we have a lot of public is the fairgrounds.
And that, that seems that, that door that everybody goes out to go to concessions.
Yes.
Seems like a perfect little corridor.
Um, that's where we're looking at it, so.
I like the look there. Okay, that was the end of my questions, I think.
I'm good.
You say that, you're going to cause stuff to stand up again. And there's twenty more pages of stuff.
About that many.
Anybody have anything else?
I'm good.
I don't currently.
Okay. Okay.
I appreciate you doing the hard work with that, so I don't have to. Or if I do, I do less. I know how much you hate deferred maintenance, but.
Well, again, I'm, I'm fair warning everybody. We pushed some of this maintenance so far that we're creating a, a bow wave and I'll give you the story. When I first got here. Our non-capitalist was six hundred thousand dollars because they hadn't done anything and that wasn't because of money.
You started.
Uh, fifteen, sixteen years ago. It wasn't because of money. It was because.
You started in the year fifteen, sixteen?
No, fifteen or sixteen years ago. Twenty, two, two thousand eight.
I'm trying to keep it light. Have you not noticed?
I see that, yes. I can tell you the Tootsie Roll story if you, we'll save that for later. We'll save that for later.
Maybe he was trying to poison me, trying to feed me a Tootsie Roll. Oh, he's selling the courthouse paint job. I'm sold. You don't have to sell me too hard. But this one's got all that fresh stucco. I feel like you walked around and kicked it with your boot just to get a good.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I mean, it's like nobody even picked it up.
Now, this is for you.
Somebody hit that with a hand trap, it looks like.
This is for you. No, no, you don't have to hit it with anything. It's coming off on its own. This was not hit. This just is peeling off. I wish if somebody was hit, that would make it much easier for us, but this is for you to sell to people that say we don't need to maintain our buildings. This is, this is really sad. This, this is sad, but we'll get into that in a minute. I don't think so. A lot of this, a lot of this is just literally peeling off. It's coming, the moisture gets underneath and it pops it right off. The problem is, is that's the wearing force for the concrete. Now there's, now it'll get inside the concrete. Next thing you know, you'll be popping rebar free. Well, then it will be alive. You're right. Which we want to avoid complete reconstruction height.
You're going to tell us what sides of the building these pictures were taken at?
I've taken on a few different, I don't know exactly. I didn't take the pictures, but. They are taken over by the jail, but you can look up.
I figured they got to be that side because I haven't noticed this.
Nah, they're by the jail. They're over by the trash can. Um, and then if you look up at the building, you'll see, but the sad one is the first one. Where the paint is just running basically. And that's the problem. That's why it costs so much to paint. So the people that say you don't need to paint the building. You give them these pictures and say, oh, now it costs us a lot more to paint the building. But anyway, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start with the capital list or the capital fund. Capital fund is supported by REIT dollars and grant funding. Uh, the project list, we're going to go right to the project list. Um, contains courthouse painting. Uh, pictures have been included. And uh, also includes with the painting is part of ADA bathroom. Now. That's over by the jury room. Reason we did the ADA bathroom is so we could get the grant. It's very, it's, you know, it's not that expensive to do the ADA bathroom and it gave us the ADA points to get the grant.
And probably should have had an ADA bathroom.
Exactly. Yes. So we have, and we will then convert the two bathrooms for the jurors. And that side of the courtroom is unisex bathrooms. One will be ADA, one won't. Okay, we also have the treasurer's HVAC, not his personally, but for his office.
What's, is that just timed out or is it broken or?
Uh, no, that is actually past life, end of life. And that is also the match for, that, that is the good thing as far as the HVAC systems. They've reached end of life. I mean, that's bad, but we've used every one of them for grant match. So instead of, you know, we would have to replace them anyway, but we actually get credit to the grant for those HVAC systems. So we actually rolled the treasurer in quite a bit because we actually rolled in his improvement also as part of our match. And we're thinking of it. I didn't touch it. I don't make those decisions. Well, I had to propose something and.
Grant your beer garden.
Yeah, yeah, I had, I didn't have the final say on that one.
Sorry, sir, different lists. Can't use one to pay the other.
But actually worked out well because we got to use it for match. So, okay, the list is, is that and HVACs. We did add, so the list has changed. We did add, um. So we got requests from uh, emergency management. So we've added two uh, generators to that list. So, um, that's, that was added and. So, um, I'll keep moving, so the, and not only that, the tower, all the tower projects were added. The tower improvements to the list. You're going to see them all on the list, but you're not going to see dollars associated with some of them. Because they're out past this list. That's why they're, they're into the thirties and so that's why you don't see dollars associated with them. But we wanted to get them on the list so we knew they still existed. We didn't forget about them.
So did this dispatch emergency management list actually exist last year? You're saying everything was put on this year?
Everything's put on this year.
Yeah.
Everything is put on this year. So now that we talk, the list isn't, so let's talk a little bit about um, revenue versus expenses. Um, let's do page one. I actually put, I was thinking of Commissioner Christopher here. I put the numbers at the top because I.
I think you switched sides because we're back to HVAC replacement. Let's get off of that list and go over to this.
No, no, no. No. So I put the numbers on the top because we know how much you like numbers. So, um, number one, we'll talk about number one. This talks about revenue versus expenses and when the fund will become. Uh. Will not, will no longer be solvent. So what we're seeing that is at the end of twenty twenty six. As we stand today, the list will, it will not be solvent. Or that fund will be empty.
As long as it doesn't keep having projects being bumped.
Right. But again, all we have is HVAC stuff on here. So, and, and so let, let's continue though. There's better news as we work through this. So list number two, this is where we added money from three oh six. Uh, my understanding is of three oh six is, is there's a potential to mothball three oh six.
Correct. We are, we are transitioning to close that fund.
And then that fund money would go to three oh three.
Yes.
So with that, the list then becomes solvent through twenty twenty seven. Adding that additional money. Now.
What was that fund?
So that's the radio projects fund to, to build those um, radio sites. Now we're in capital maintenance for those sites, so um. We have moved all of the radio sites maintenance, projected maintenance to the capital improvement plan. So that we can long-term plan for those maintenance items.
That's a good way. Along, thank you.
Along with the other maintenance, yes.
I, that was perfect. Thank you. Okay, and then number three, page three. People probably want to know what's page three. Page three, Pam's been doing this list, doing this same exercise for years. Yeah, we watch our, our funds very closely. Pam's very good. We look at them monthly, but what this is, is the same list that you see here done in twenty twenty. Now, why is this important, people? The reason this is important is because if you look at this. The fun would have went dry. This is estimated back in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty one. So it actually shows, or actually this was further back. This was back in seventy. So it shows that this thing would have only been good to twenty twenty one. What do you know? We're at twenty twenty four. There's still money in the account. Why is that? Well.
Told you no on projects?
No. You weren't here for this, so we can't, well, you can't take the credit for this one.
I didn't take, I said the board.
No, no. What we did is we found grant funding. Uh, for some of it, that helped supplant the fund. Also, you found. There were big sales that helped boost REIT. That was another big thing. The, we found ways to reduce the project cost of what was estimated. Um, we did push a couple of projects back. Uh, and that's why, but we've seen this trend. I've seen this trend since two thousand eight. Where we said this thing will go bankrupt or it'll be dead at this point. Pam's been doing this for a long time and every time we project. Where we said this thing will go bankrupt or it'll be dead at this point. Pam's been doing this for a long time and every time we project this, we're usually a couple of years, we usually get more than that out of it. So that's the good news here. I'm not guaranteeing that that's gonna happen, but we want to talk trends. That's the trend we've seen. I don't think we have anything else on capital, do we? We went to page three. There's no page.
The, what is the uh, revenues, other sources? Um, on any of your pages?
Uh, what Pam did at the bottom of this spreadsheet, you will see the totals and then you will see grant revenues. So it's broken out at this point in time, what we know. Now, I'm not saying there could be more. So we broke it out.
I am talking this stuff. You, uh, on the, on page three, it has, you had seventy thousand of other sources in 2020 and I was just trying to figure out why there was only one year of other sources and what it was.
Uh, that may have been some energy some, I don't know. I don't know what.
Some random.
It's like seventy dollars here, anywhere.
Yeah.
What's it say? Most of it is nothing except for that one year that says seventy grand. And that's why I was trying to figure out what it was. On their page three for twenty twenty. And.
Yeah. Okay. So those are estimates versus actuals.
So.
That, that's okay.
Yeah.
But that's, again, the, I think the main point of that was to say that, you know, we projected it in the past to go broke lot sooner than it has. So far, knock on wood, been here sixteen years and we've been projecting it and so far it's not, it has not happened. Exactly. And, and the other thing that's helped us that we didn't expect is sometimes these green energies projects sell.
Yeah.
And that's usually a big boost for REIT.
Okay.
Anything else there?
Okay. Uh, are you going back to this list or are you moving on to the whole next topic?
I'm moving on to the next topic unless you have a question.
You stopped before we got to air conditioners.
There's only three to talk about anymore. We're eliminating.
Let's talk about them. Where are they? I thought we were done except for the treasurer's air conditioner.
Now, we still have some, the only ones, we have some in the pioneers. We have three more, four more in the pioneer center.
It's like every, it's like a revolving door of air conditioners in this.
Well, there's, there's hundreds of them. We have to keep, the problem.
That aren't broke is my.
No, no, that's not true. We waited till some of them did break and then we got complaints from, and rightfully so, because they leak, when they break, they leaked into the health department and created a problem. We also had one where we didn't have one for seniors, so they had a portable all year.
Where, where is units five, six and seven?
West end of the pioneer center.
Over the top of what? Cooling and heating what?
Ah, I don't know exactly. I think they're the courts. I think that's where we are now. I don't know exactly where, I think they're the courts.
None of them were broke. They were just timed out.
Yeah, some of them aren't in very good shape. One of them were limping along. And the way they are, if you've ever, you have, I know you haven't been up there, but.
They're stacked, but yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a zoo up there. So if this one's broke here, we, we'd replace this one, this one and this, because you gotta take those out to get there. So you go ahead and replace them. They're the same vintage. Keeping in mind, those were never commercial units when they were installed. They were value engineered out and we were residential units. That's why the lifespan, well, they're way past their lifespan.
How did they get that approved for a government building? I mean, that just seems weird.
If you want, we could sit down. I can tell you a lot of things that are wrong again, but. There's a lot of stuff you would wonder how they got through.
Well, and that's, that's kind of my question because I'd imagine they built that with some grant funding as well. And you would think there would have to be at least some kind of grant funding for a government building.
I don't know if they built that with grant funding or not. I think it was bonded.
I know it was bonded, but I figured there'd be at least some grant in it.
I don't know if there was. I turned it out.
Interesting.
I think it was all bonded. Yeah, there was, there's some problems there. There's no question.
Is this the last batch of air conditioners? Ron, do you get air conditioners for the next twenty years if I finish this?
Uh, I think, I think. I think we got them all. Well, no, that's not true. I, okay, I lied. We don't have. No, I did, I lied. We, we're gonna get to another one here in a minute. I'm saving it for a surprise for you.
Remember me never visiting the beer garden? I might have to visit the beer garden.
Uh, no, it's, uh, but we do have one more to talk about. There are more though, yes.
Uh, let me, let me look through the rest of this and.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's pass it out. Uh, some of that stuff on there, a lot of that is nice to have, doesn't mean it's gonna happen. And it's been on that list, some of that stuff since I've been here, so I'm not saying it's gonna happen.
No, but it's nice to have on there because if you see a.
We get a grant.
Come on the page. If you see some boating and recreation grant to build a boat ramp, hey, great.
Exactly.
I'll throw fifty grand at, in a grant to rebuild a boat ramp or build a new one.
Exactly. Exactly. Um.
All right, I'm done with that.
And actually, we did a bunch of work in Lisle this year.
Well, that's why I was kind of wondering what.
We were, we didn't do it, we didn't do it on the capital side either. We, we did it on a different side. We did not, did not.
It would be nice to be able to level that lot out there and put parking in for tracers and because you're gonna get so much more economic development if you actually have parking in there.
At the, in Lisle?
Uh, yeah, the Lisle Point.
Well, we did Lisle.
I know, but.
But not.
I'm talking two hundred trailers.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
And.
The problem is, is we are kind of stuck with, we'd have to buy property.
That's what I'm saying. You buy that lot next to it. You could actually, you can even potentially buy that lot with case of PETA funds for economic.
Well, that's true. That's true.
And it actually provides stimulation and growth.
Yes. That would be good. I don't disagree.
And, but that's, that's a whole train of thought that I.
No, I'm with you.
I'm, I.
No, I'm with you.
Provides much more economic development to build another warehouse.
I'm with you.
For two employees.
Okay.
All right, my vent is over. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to three oh five. Three oh five is, is, is essentially set up. It's a community's fund and it's set up to do work at the airport. Um, what it is, and, and there's two pages. It's revenues on, on the first page and expenses on the second page. Uh, these are estimates. We're pretty confident with the estimates. Uh, what you're gonna see though is, and I think Jen, no, Jen's still here, so she'll appreciate this. So we anticipate getting extra money from EDA. And we'll find out what that's gonna be when we go out to bid. Even if you go out to bid, you're still not tied to do the project. Um, but to balance the budget, so you don't have more expense and then versus more revenue, so I don't get yelled at by Jen, so we forced the, the, the EDA amount, the extra nine hundred thousand. That's where it's kept. But I just want everybody to know or and that's pretty much all I got to say about that project, except if you want to know where we are, we are ninety percent plants. And we are working with EDA as our FAA to get their buy-off with the potential, with, with the plan to go to bid in November.
Of this year? Is that bill start of next year?
To start construction, January of twenty twenty-five. That's the plan so far. And there's no questions on three oh five? We'll move to the next one. Which is very small and short. I'll make this question or make this fun one thirty-one. It's pass through.
I'm sorry. Can I go back? Um, with the point oh nine dollars in here?
Yes, there's the point oh nine in there. That is correct.
Okay, is.
We show it, we show the DOWs and the point oh nine.
Okay, so did that, I don't know that that point oh nine got reflected in one twenty-fives.
I don't know that. I don't do one twenty-five.
All right, okay, so I'll touch base with you later then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so while us handing out one of the last things, we'll talk about one three oh one or one thirty-one, which is, it's a, it's a pass through. It's for CDBG. And um, some of these comments are helpful to certain people, but what fun thirty, one thirty-one is, is a pass through. It's for CDBG and it's for smaller agencies. The county has backed in the past, some of the projects that were the community center and click a tat, which the county worked, this comes through economic development and public works assists. And this in like click a tat school was done, done the community center. And in their thing, they went out, got additional funding. There was also Dallas Port Water District that got two of these grants. And the board picked up the additional funding. Just thought, dude, for thought.
Any estimate on that addition, how much?
It wasn't a lot, but it was um, five to ten percent. So it's probably like for the, the uh, the Murdoch sewer study, I think it was the board maybe picked up ten grand for the.
Did the board pick it up or did it get paid out of case of PETA dollars for?
Board picked it up. Um, and they may have taken it out of oh nine. I didn't pay much.
I'll have to go back and look.
Uh, and then the other one.
Now you're dealing with water and sewer. Why wouldn't you? I mean, if they didn't, it was a mistake.
Well, they had already got the CDBG grant, but you're right. They could have taken it out of there. I don't know if they did or not. I don't think so. My understanding is, is they took it out of oh nine dollar.
As I said, they should have either taken it out of oh nine or went for landfill gas before they took it out of the bank account. So, but they did or didn't, I don't know, but.
Then the other one was fifty, sixty grand. But anyway, we're moving on past that. That brings us to our last one. Look at us.
I'm sorry, Seth. Your legs are gonna be worn out if you keep, you just get sat down and he says, hey, by the way, stand up and get another one.
Okay, we already passed that out?
Yep.
Outstanding. Let's talk Dallas Port. This will be quick. This is, this is fun four oh one. Um, we have not got the budget from PUD yet, but that goes in coordination with their, with their agreement. We'll get it, I think, October fifteenth. At that time, we can revisit um, where we stand. Just a quick rundown of of the budget. Um, we have seventy-four thousand dollars in there for um, it's public works to actually administer that, the fund, which is wages, benefits, advertising and insurance.
So just for clarification, this isn't what the PUD is charging us. This is what your administrative costs of ours to be the pass through.
Yes.
End of scenario.
Yes. I, we have an accountant now pretty much that we take in the money. She has to reconcile it, bill PUD and then we pay PUD. So it's quite an in and out, but it's required by state auditor. Um, then, then we go on to that where we get to uh, we can go to Pam's mistake first or we can uh, Pam had a small mistake. Uh, under uh, permits, we had a hundred and fifty thousand. That's a little large. It's fifteen hundred.
Right?
So, so that'll change the, the bottom line a little bit. Yeah, it happens.
Yeah, if that gave me a hundred and fifty thousand correction over here, that'd be nice. I'm nowhere.
No, it's just the one fund. Um, and that, I mean, that kind of covers it. Um.
What, what, remind me again what we did for repairs and maintenance this year that.
Okay, repairs and maintenance.
Instead of two hundred proposed next year.
Okay, repairs and maintenance, this year included the pigging, which is expensive. This year, it's um, this year, we have, we have, of course, the HVAC and everything that we take care of. It's the contract for the HVAC, but also.
Now we get air conditioners for sewer systems.
Now you're gonna appreciate this. I saved this for last. Let me, let me go to the one first. So the three projects that we need to do, they're small. Um, one, we found out just the other day. Um, it's been, actually it's been a little while ago and we had put money in, thank goodness, that our fire alarm system now is debunked. Our fire alarm system is an old system, but that's how they built it. It's hooked to the SCADA system, which is the system, the alarm system for the sewer system. So if the alarm, so what was happening was is PUD kept getting these alarms. So they'd have to have somebody drive over, check the plant, make sure the lift stations, everything was fine. Well, we traced it back finally. We brought Felton in, our contractor, our fire alarm contractor. And it turned out it was a bad fire head, fire alarm head in the um, break room. You can't get those fire alarm heads anymore. You gotta replace the system. Systems antiquated. Um, so what we have to do is replace the system and we will pull it out of the SCADA system. So it's a standalone. If you had to replace the SCADA system and that, you'd be talking three, four hundred thousand dollars. Instead, we can do a fire alarm system for fifty thousand dollars.
And that's good news?
Well, yeah, it's better than three or four hundred thousand. But now, the, the other one that you're gonna appreciate, I know, is uh, we also have a leak in the ceiling. We're trying to figure out what the hell is going on. It's the HVAC system that's leaking. Um, that HVAC has been in there since we built that. Since they built that. So the HVAC is twenty-three years old. Can't get parts for it anymore. We have to replace the HVAC system. Good news is it's only forty thousand dollars there.
Yeah, a roll around one on wheels is probably cheaper for the amount of time people are actually in that building.
Uh, yeah, but it isn't just for the building. It keeps, it isn't the people. It actually keeps all the switches. I know, I know. I was explaining.
I was jokingly, side snarky comment.
But I think that's all we have, isn't it Pam? Unless we have time for the Tootsie Rolls. I'm not gonna tell the Tootsie Roll story. Pam doesn't like the Tootsie Roll story.
I don't know. You got twenty-three listeners online that might want to know the Tootsie Roll story.
I think they want to hear the Tootsie Roll story.
I think you should make Pam tell the Tootsie Roll story.
No.
Brain check, Tootsie Roll story. You, me, you have to tell it yourselves. Okay. Uh, I appreciate it. You did a very good job of answering my questions and going back when you were trying to avoid me.
I would never try to avoid you. Never.
We get right to where he knows I'm gonna talk and then he shifts to the next.
How many years have we been doing this now?
Know me well, sir.
Yes.
And, and I appreciate it because it's almost like you fix all the things you know I'm gonna bitch about.
We try.
Bring them to me resolved, so I don't have to bitch about it.
We, we try. We try.
That gate. If I'm here next year, we're gonna have a conversation about that gate. It got postponed for ten thousand dollars. If I'm not here, I'm gonna be sitting in that audience having a conversation with whoever's sitting here about that ten thousand dollar gate.
But here's what we'll do. After we reconstruct the tentile, we'll give you the receipts.
Peanut gold.
Did you see though, all the other stuff that was?
It isn't just the gate.
I, I didn't see. There's some fencing.
It's fencing and, and.
Fire on top.
Yes, and that.
The pose.
Yeah, plus the widening. There's, there's, I mean, there's other things that go with that. When we, when we fix them, we don't just, we try to make it so it's better when it's done and we don't have the same problem again. It needs.
In, in all reality, it's gonna end up with a chain across it with a little tiny padlock and somebody could snip with some bolt cutters.
No, that's not the idea. That's why we'll, we will replace it. You'll have two locks and you won't snip it with a pair of bolt cutters because there won't be a chain there.
I'll just snip the little aluminum bands that hold the cyclone fence on and slide that over.
See, this is where the ten thousand dollars comes in because guys like you want to cut their fence.
Yeah, I'll make a paper tomorrow. Under Rob.
It's the camera that costs that goes there to watch the.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they're wrong.
They do. I got that replaced last year. I was good with fixing that because it was leaking through the building on the. I was good with fixing that, cause it was leaking through the building on the brand new control board. And I didn't wanna buy a control board again, because it was getting waterlogged.
No, those are kinda costly.
That's why the painting of the courthouse didn't take place last year, cause we did the hole in the roof of the jail. One's broken, one's not quite broken. Okay, that's all I have.
Me too, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else?
No, next time let Seth get a word in edgewise.
We let you have all the words.
He was Ben White.
He's Ben White, he's turning the letters.
Oh no, we have something special next week.
Oh, see, this is like the Tootsie Roll story, just dangles the carrot.
Another air conditioner.
I'll tell the Tootsie Roll story, that.
I almost want a VR and R fund for air conditioners around here.
No, we're gonna tell the Tootsie Roll story now. So, yeah, there's this, there's always this conception that if. You're given a, you know, if you make up the budget and you go over. That's fine, if somebody else tells you, no, you need to cut this. And you go over, then that's different, so where, how does the Tootsie Roll fit into this? So I'll tell you the Tootsie Roll story. So, if I send Pam to the store to get a big Tootsie Roll. And Pam says the Tootsie Roll's ten bucks, and I say. No, I'm gonna give you ten, I'm gonna give you eight dollars, go get the Tootsie Roll. Pam comes back with, Pam comes back and says, I can't afford the Tootsie Roll, I need a budget amendment. Well, that, and if I say that's poor budgeting, that's not poor budgeting, cause Pam told me the Tootsie Roll was ten bucks. But I only gave her eight to buy the Tootsie Roll. See, there's the Tootsie Roll story.
It wasn't here as good as I was hoping it would be.
I know.
But I get it.
But that's the point though. Okay, I think we're done.
That's so true.
Oh look, we saved all this time.
Thank you a lot of money.
Yeah.
You tired yet? Maybe you need a Red Bull, you need a Red Bull.
Yes.
He's like, this is way lighter now, I can lug this back.
It bothering you? Thank you.
Yeah.
Probably the air conditioner throwing off the equilibrium of the building and then the, the nameplate slides. Probably happy he didn't get his air conditioners discussed, or his generators discussed during that whole time.
Well, I think you wanted to.
That's why he's here, huh?
You let him off pretty good on the air conditioners.
For those of you that don't know, I've had an issue with the air conditioners for three years. We have eight hundred and forty air conditioners and we praise them all just because they're timed out. And I, my argument is, I have an air conditioner in my house, it's probably timed out too, I ain't fixing it until it's broke. If I can get five more years out of it, that means the new air conditioner starts five years later and I can get an extra five out of that one and eventually. You didn't, you saved a bunch of money. Um, kinda like replacing cars at a hundred thousand miles instead of a hundred and fifty, if it's blown up, here, have a new car, not keep driving. That beef, sorry. Huh?
Get my car right now to a hundred and ninety before it dies.
Kinda car.
Is that, that's my goal, it's a goal boat, so I feel like that's a lofty, but.
When it just starts hitting its prime.
I was gonna say nowadays, two, three hundred thousand easy. You had, you had to buy a communist car, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, buy some European thing, what? Good show, you're my car.
And that's all over the news.
He drives Subaru, that's, you know, same problem. Take a nap. No, you, you should get two hundred, the computers don't go bad in those, it's engine stuff, so as long as you're maintaining a transmission. As long as you're maintaining, you don't worry about computers and stuff, right? Um, they'll have it last longer, so.
I'll ask my mechanic, does this light really matter, they're like, it listens blinking and screaming at you, no.
We had a pickup with a check engine light on, and you can't do anything about it, so my husband's theory was. Black duct tape, we forgot about it, we traded it in, they're like, what's this? Yeah, don't look at that.
Well now, it's, yeah, now you get a check engine light just for not tightening your gas cap all the way to the gas station, so.
Yeah, drugs and meds.
Get in there and then I get all my tanks to the trim and I get all this like engine failure.
You get dust in the tank?
How she drives.
Very.
Well, I get that, but unless there's a hole in the system, especially cause it's computer controlled, so you should have a evaporative control system to make sure none of the. Air goes outside.
Right now, probably.
I, I have, I own Ford, so.
Okay, so it happened to my Ford Escape and my F one fifty, and so my F one fifty, I had only filled three quarters of a tank. And it's.
That's weird. Because that, yeah, that's, I mean. The other, the other thing that makes sense to me is it, it, it wasn't dirt in your tank, that makes no sense at all.
Now.
I bet you it's more of you in that evaporative emission, so that when the tank drains, gas doesn't.
Yeah.
Fumes don't go outside, you'll have things like a canister purge valve. And if it's not allowing air to get through, it's not, you're, as you fill the tank, that air's gotta go somewhere. And if it's not allowing it to vent, it's telling you it's full. And so it's kicking the pump off, so it's probably a twelve dollar part. It's somebody else's part now, right?
That's one.
It's the Ford, found on road debt.
Sorry, what are we doing now?
I have two, mine's right out there.
I don't, I. No, I think Jeff King is here, but he's out in the hall. So he may be.
Yeah, I, I can tell you I bought.
Is my guess.
Um, last year with ninety eight thousand miles on it. Hundred and ninety thousand, don't scare me at all, three fifty is what I plan to get.
I didn't see someone.
To need uh, time for something?
No, just wondering why we.
Why we're just chatting?
Eventually, we'll get fleet vehicles to two hundred thousand, that'll be nice.
Is Jeff at three thirty?
We had public adult probation at four thirty.
And nothing.
Potentially, we need to get law enforcement up.
Yeah.
Off the hundred thousand mark, that'll save us a ton of money.
Are we on kind of a break till four thirty now, with adult?
Speaking of, you know how we changed the fleet vehicles to a hundred and fifty thousand and then save us much money going into fleet?
Yeah.
We still have law enforcement at a hundred thousand. So that'd save you a lot of money in fleet, moving that to a hundred and fifty, just passing it on.
Um, that was what I was gonna bring up, actually, since we. Okay, we, we are on a break. Um, now, in regards to the sheriff's, like you had asked me about Tahos or something like that, so yeah. So their purchasing of vehicles is still that budget of. The hundred thousand dollar per vehicle within that group, as they had budgeted for the Tahos, so I wanted to make sure that I. Answered your question.
My question, I guess my question is, if we're doing a hundred thousand per vehicle. And the vehicle's replaced every three years, that means we're budgeting thirty three thousand dollars a year, five years. Is that same, okay, so then we're budgeting twenty thousand dollars per year, if we can shift that to. Seven years, because it's now a hundred fifty thousand miles. You just change that to seventeen thousand per year, you save yourself seven thousand dollars per vehicle.
Now, if the board was like to adjust how the sheriff replaces their vehicles. We can definitely have that conversation, I'm open to it, they don't report to me on mileage on the patrol vehicles. So they're not replaced by mileage like every other VR and R vehicle is.
We didn't do that when we discussed raising the VR and R, because I think it was kind of a test.
Now, if the.
See how it works.
Ops to not want to. Fund, um, like Tahos. Or whatever, and wants to reduce that down to.
Or trucks over explorers.
Or a, a cheaper vehicle, um, I mean, we could, we could definitely talk about that with the sheriff. And that would reduce the rental rate, cause then we wouldn't be budgeting a hundred thousand a vehicle, we would.
They do, they do per year, right?
They do groups per year.
Right, and so it's on the, and it's on a five year turnover, or what is it on?
I believe it's five, let me go pull.
I thought they had three groups and just nonstop rotation.
It seems like it, cause they've all been coming late.
And are we budgeting the same amount each year based on that, or on the four year, does it bump up their budget?
Yeah.
But the expense. Some of the things, um.
The same, depending on the vehicles, the rental rate is where it gets tricky, because on those years of reductions. Um. The office wanted to reevaluate and they kinda use VR and R to like reduce, like. Let's kick these things off with VR and R and we reduce those things and we had some fun. Some balance, group balances, like vehicle account balances that were pretty high. And so we were trying to really just find that sweet spot and we went a little too far. And so that's why it's a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars more this year than last year. Um, and just, just because I wanna make sure that we are. We found, we found our sweet spot, we used up those balances, everything that we transferred in. Um, from other accounts and that we. Uh. We have some, a vehicle, a VR and R rate for patrol that is consistent. Consistently the same going forward.
And that's how much more than last year?
Uh, roughly one sixty, one sixty eight, something like that. Working with adult probation.
From all the meetings today, have we saved any money on two point five million that we thought we were down to two point two million?
Uh, buildings and grounds had re, had reduced their utilities lines and some of, and their wages a little bit.
The short answer would be no.
Yeah. And the long.
Doesn't sound like it.
We just whipped through a couple million bucks right there.
Alright, I'm still trying to figure out how we got back up to two point five from the two point.
Didn't go look at it, I, I just threw out the number.
Margarita, rocks, extra salt, a big glass. Gallon, gallon size.
Oh, um.
Adding public works.
Bringing Dallas. After we get the PUD's budget, they.
Yeah.
They don't submit their budget till after the fifteenth of October.
No, we can't really think about it.
Not that that's gonna give us any general purpose dollars by any means.
Money to be made in that plant. If, if the DOWS ever had a sister city on the other side of the river. There would be money to make in that plant, it is the Taj Mahal of.
Reroute the river, they'll take it.
So you guys asked about, um. The patrols, VR and R, um. So these are the different group, A through E here. Um, and the rotation that those are on, which group A is the year for twenty twenty four?
So A three, it's a five year rotation.
So. These purchases right here are, um, last year's Dodge Rams. I guess it's not Dodge anymore, is it? Um, then, I feel like. Here. Those are Tahoe.
Those are the ones, public works by White Winston from Urs Motors.
Oh, did they jump on that contract?
It's twofold, because you have the price of the vehicle and then you have the price of putting all this stuff on it. And if you don't have the same body style as what you had before, you have to buy all new stuff. Which that stuff is half the price, fifty grand, fifty grand a car, fifty grand a stuff. If you're not reusing the stuff, you're paying fifty grand.
Yeah, so, so that's for what.
That.
What Commissioner Christopher is talking right here is, um, this. You know, these Tahos, and here's the stuff, the add-ons to make them patrol vehicles and everything that, that's needed, the one vehicle.
My point is, if you buy the next Tahoe in three years, you can't take this stuff off.
Oh, I understand.
That's why they have police vehicles, cause then they don't change that body style for fifteen years, so you can exchange stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So does that number include the cost to day wireless and all the other stuff in that?
Which number are you talking about?
So, when you do the VR and R Tahoe, fifty one thousand?
Hmm.
So.
That's just the vehicle, this per, this like, number right there, that's day wireless.
But that's something, you're eighty thousand on Tahoe.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty two.
Now, you know.
And isn't there.
Day wireless nu- number doesn't really change, um. Because this is for three trucks, three Rams right here, the Rams. Price was significantly, it wasn't significant, it was a few thousand dollars cheaper than the Tahoe, um.
But the Rams don't have cages on them, right? They don't transport, do they?
Nothing has, stock vehicles off of lots, so you. Yeah, yeah, but we're still.
We're having a conversation, that's why we can't be recording, oh. Yeah, continue.
So no, they don't come with any police stuff, so the first thing we do is put brush guards and winches and. And then three years from now, we get another truck to put a brush guard and a wench instead of taking the one off this one.
It's actually five years from now.
It's like, I knew they just. And then, Elisa sent me the Durango's purchases that just recently happened here.
So the question is, is do all of those need replaced every five years? That would be the question based on mileage.
Well, the question would, they replace them now, if it isn't broken, then they put it out in the back lot and use it as a spare. Quote unquote.
Right.
That's what they do. We replace them in blocks, the question would be, does it need to be replaced in blocks? Because we don't replace our vehicles in blocks. We replace them when they're due, so one year you might have seven, one year you might have three. If you set it based on mileage, it's not time.
You've got seven corner applications the first day.
Wow.
Over half of them are qualified.
Wow.
Wow.
To some, some degree of quality.
You see a bunch of the same Taco Bell apps.
Seven within like, I mean, twelve hours.
Where'd you post it?
Wherever we post all the other jobs.
Wow.
I think it's just.
Boy, people are dying to take that job.
I think it's just an indicator of.
Come on, come on now.
I think it's an indicator, we're starting to get a lot of applications for jobs, the economy.
The economy is tripping, yeah. But then, that many qualified applicants, that's the weird thing.
Well, various degrees of qualifications from.
right out of school to, you know, been doing it a while.
That's still surprising to me.
Yeah, me too.
The qualification is a nice odd dude person once. And I work at Taco Bell.
So I guess going, going back to that though, so the sheriff is asking for two new deputies, which would require two new vehicles, which would require an extra twenty thousand dollars a year per veh- that's how I work it, twenty thousand dollars a year per vehicle. On top of that, that they didn't in, did or did not include in their budget. The people, it appears they did. They included the people, but not vehicles.
Or the cell phones.
Vehicles are just a regular schedule, right?
Or is he any other pens and papers?
Just, just the benefit.
New holsters.
I wouldn't anticipate them to add vehicles, um, because they have, they maintain a, their own pool of vehicles that they use.
At some point they'd have to add if they, but I don't know what the breaking.
I would argue that if you don't, you're gonna hear that driving vehicle, that's public safety hazard.
Yep, that's what you're getting. You gonna drink that or throw it?
I know why you're hiding behind the monitor.
That's right. Safer back there.
Their day wireless is cheaper with the Durango's than the other two. Cause day wireless is looking like twenty-four thousand for the Durango's, but it was thirty, almost thirty-two for the Tahoe within the.
Are the Durango's police package, or they just?
I think, I think the that's the one, it's the one that they ordered that. Carmen said they'd ordered a Durango for the jail. And that one was, that one was already a patrol addition. Maybe that's.
I think one of the three is supposedly for corrections.
That one, that one is.
Do we, do we know how many spare vehicles they have? Because those are all vehicles that you're paying insurance and everything else on. Has anybody looked at their?
Anymore, we're self-insured vehicles. But.
I guess I do know how many, I just don't want to.
Yeah, but it's like George, when he needed tires, he walks everything, and I swatted the tires off my truck with your old junker over here, and Bob's like, sure.
I, I do know how many, um, there's just some information on there that I don't think I could share with public, like license plate numbers and stuff like that. I think it has to be, um.
Scrubbed.
But I, I do have it and I can get you copies of it. I just don't want to share it on the screen and accidentally share something I'm not supposed to.
That's one thing I miss about the original budget books years ago, is each department had a page that explained essentially their work chart, but it also had the vehicles they had, the amount of mileage they drive per year, blah, 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 blah. Our new vehicles that department was in the section about the binder.
That's because.
And for me.
That's because.
That was very helpful.
Glenn had built his own database that housed all of that information. I have to do everything by hand and that's just one more added. Added, um, added thing that, and at this point in time, I'm still waiting on mileage from the sheriff in regards to some jail, the jail vehicles. So I don't, I just don't have the complete information to be able to print for you.
So I guess the next question is, is we've spent two hours, three hours today and we haven't saved any money. What are we gonna do to start putting a dent in this? Since we're just having discussion. You just went through a lot of money, I. There was a lot of money right there and there was no, I asked, what, what could you pull out? And the answer was, we could pull out some landscaping. And I think, what was that in there? And you say that's what you can do, the difference between what you can do and what you will do are gonna be a little different.
Yeah, but that, I, that's why I commended him, that was pretty, I compared to what he's delivered us in the past.
And he did take some.
Again, I, to your question, I don't know how you're gonna get to two point two million dollars at this rate.
You're not gonna get to two point two without people, sorry.
Well, I think you can. But. Well, it comes down to, you know, how much are you gonna pull out of reserves? How much are you gonna pull here? Until you can pull other level or lever under other few, it's been a long day, other levers. I mean, it was fun balance too. That's what I mean, fun balance.
What did we adjust on the corner?
Or I was telling the, like, other commissioners that we got seven corner applications on the first.
My gosh, people have been waiting.
Yeah, apparently so.
That's an easy job. Seven, that's awesome. Everybody qualified.
Let's say half of them are various levels from.
Well, that's good.
Sheriff's thing. Oh, he did?
In Coldin though.
It's only twenty. Uh, but one of the, what is, was maybe the board is hiring the new jail administrator as a replacement for mom two years from now. I'm like, what?
That takes a lot of thinking.
I mean, I even said, I don't. The, this, the person we offered is a jail guy, he's never been a cop, street guy. I don't know even what.
Look at the job description.
Um, I just don't see it.
Yeah, please don't let, get one more conspiracy theory built.
Anything else come up last night that was entered, that wasn't said in White Salmon?
That was actually much calmer and tamer than White Salmon.
I could believe that.
Um, there wasn't any, any bias in that.
Right.
But, um, no, it was, it was kind of just the same scenario, but it's much calmer and tamer, less hostile, less, uh, disrespectful, right? You guys would, I don't care.
When, uh, I noticed when I came in, the Eric, what's Matt, that does the videoing, he's gonna be here tonight for. Yeah, he was outside.
Okay.
He's doing his own.
He does. He went to film school.
Well, I never seen him do anything else with Paul and Sheriff, that's my question.
Well, he's building a whole thing about the constitutional sheriff movement stuff. And he wants to sell it at like Sundance or one of those. Be instant famous and rich. He's shown.
Can talk about the jail budget if you want, if you wanna jump in previous quarter budget, jail budget.
We were having a nice afternoon. Okay, now I'm better, okay. That was a positive. I got more. Sure.
There's good gummy bears in that vending machine.
You don't get everything you want.
I see they took away the one of the pioneers.
Planning ahead.
You know, in pass, if I just need to have donuts, we'd have cookies. Debbie, make sure you leave them raw. Departments bring in.
Bribery, bribery cookies.
Yeah. That's the difference between having already gone and actually having to go through the budget.
That's a bribery. Probably can't accept that.
Was it the same people? Was it the same people?
No. I mean, yes and no, the same ones you normally see, but there was probably six or seven. Jail stuff, no, Tom was, well, that's what I said. Uh, jails, budgets. And then he talks, pops in. He talked potential budget cuts.
Oh, that's good.
These two that are here are very interesting, I was a biologist.
Cause he was training in. Doing sheriff and training through sheriff's car. He made a comment that somebody said something, I gotta go through the academy with it one year or whatever. And he said, no, you don't.
That, well, they've had that Glenwood one and he goes all the way from Glenwood down to Ford to back up through Buckford. And then they had a new one come from Ellen Springs. And he came all the way down and was living out here at Soda Springs. Then he crossed the river, he went all the way up, I think, the Highland area, back down and went up Buckford and found that one. Hung out for a little while, decided not, they took off and getting went back. He went up to Glenwood, crossed the Little Chat River.
Cause they're callers.
Well, I know they're callers, they just are not very forthcoming on where they actually are until a year after they left that spot.
The biologist. Yeah, so he's crossed the Little Chat River five times and he's living out here on the.
Oh, really?
But all of the cameras and everything, there's still only the two of them. They're not pairing up, they're not finding a female. There's just the two of them, yeah. I know.
Matter of time. I said, I don't, I, I don't trust biologists.
Do you trust anyone or anything? Do you trust anyone or anything?
Yes, I do, but until they give me a reason to not go. I, like I said, I was, I was. There's no roots in worry.
But they are.
Even though we knew that. And I'm sure pictures he talked about, he's swearing up and down, there's no wolf over there, there's never been a recorded wolf over there, blah, blah, blah.
It's just not the big trade.
Three to six months later, they come out with a news report. With the wolf that had been living on the backside of Mount Hood, what I talked about.
Yeah.
For two years had migrated its way down.
Yeah, it was.
And it's like.
It was going back and forth.
It was there. He, he tried to come, oh, it's so large stuff.
I worked in the forest for recently, some kind of, and they released wolves and a pair of.
I've been, over the last six months, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife has refused to admit that Oregon has any.
What? It has what?
Until multiple people have taken pictures, uh, with,
Yeah, I just may be nervous.
Historical markers, you might say, in the background to prove it was taken here and not in Minnesota. The fish, well, they said, yeah, okay, we do, we just wanna keep the quiet because we're afraid people are gonna kill it. You know, patisserie stories. And it's like this. I, that's, there's something I'll agree with Bob. I, I wouldn't eat fish.
Two AM to three AM? So I was all nervous. And then you drop down low and then. Okay, it's right here.
Actually.
Did we wanna talk about any other budgets? I mean, if.
Not much to talk about the jail budget. Not much to talk about the jail budget was old.
Obviously, don't know what you could possibly do on a jail budget.
Did you get any information about Comenia County on the corner? We know that's what we're doing part time or.
We have seven applications, did you hear that?
I did hear that, no, uh, with the coroner position, I heard back from Tom Lannan at the end of the day, um, Adam Kick and theirs continuing their discussion, so. Uh, we won't know until next week. On whether, but either way, the um, income. If it's point six, we can reduce the cost down. If it's. One FTE, we can still reduce the cost down. Because no matter what, we'd have revenue to backfill that, so our.
If you wouldn't reduce the revenue or the expense, you just increase the revenue.
If it's a, if it's point one, but if it's point six, we can reduce the costs.
Right, but if you're sharing with Comenia at a point one or at a full time.
Right. But I'm looking at it. The net, not just expenses.
You're literally running through a rainstorm. You never seen an entire herd.
Do you have any experience with the.
Oh, I did, I did have something, but I'll let Jeff go first.
Be here to to inform the board as well as anybody in the public that's listening. If you received an emergency notification system message. Uh, from emergency management earlier. That was about a prescribed burn that is scheduled to take place tomorrow morning off Zalinski Road. Uh, if you only receive the text message, um. You can select the link in there and that'll give you all the information you need about it. Um, please do not call the sheriff's office. Um, they don't have anything to do with it. And there is a s- a number in both the voice message and the email that was sent out through our system as well. That will get you directly to the people that are responsible for conducting that prescribed burn and they can answer all your questions.
I mean, it obviously went out countywide if I got it taken air.
No, it it went out just to the people that are in the view shed of that fire smoke that will. Be expected tomorrow.
Cause I was just thinking. Made it a little smaller circle. But I guess the people here are gonna see it and report it, so.
Yeah, we used our um, mapping system and a view shed. Uh, uh, tool in the mapping system for that location they're gonna burn, we picked about a hundred and twenty feet. Above ground level and that gave us a view shed clear up into um, High Prairie and out to the ridge lines to the south. And a little bit east of Goldendale, we drew that box for everybody that might be likely to see. Some smoke rising up out of the trees, it won't be a plume, it'll just be. Uh, not a circle, but we draw, I mean, we can do a radius, but we draw a line on the map, yes. No, if you're signed up. Living in that residence or working, or excuse me, in that area or working there, it's your choice.
So if there was five hundred tourists camping by the way.
Now, only if we use the state. Um, uh, we assist them, which is what Comenia County did for the Williams Mine Fire and it went to way more people than it should have. That, yep, those are mistakes being made in that system, right? Yes, we, we can send it to all cell phones in a given area, not out of our system directly, but out of the state's system. But we do that very sparingly because typically that doesn't apply to things we have going on. If it was a hazmat incident with, you know. A cloud of ethylmethylkileyol, then that would, that would apply. Sorry, that's it. Right. Okay. We good? I just thought I'd take this time, let everybody know.
Here we go. All right, it appears. That, so I went through and um. Did some calculations on the supplementals that were done last year for cola transfers. Um, and then. I did a little bit of an estimate to try and see what I could see were potential needs for non-union employees um, for this year. Um, and non-grant funded departments, um. And I see last, last year we used about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for of the placeholder. Um, of the four hundred and fifty thousand that we, that we put there, this year I'm looking at. Two seventy to two eighty, um, and I say that without really receiving those yet. Um. And currently our placeholder for twenty twenty five is six twenty-three-five. Um.
So this is just not union and you think this year is going to be a two hundred and seventy, is that what you just said?
And yes.
Or non-union law?
Yes, because the union um, departments and offices have historically built those in. Um, that would be the sheriff's office, the um, emergency management and public works.
Bigger number than I expected, so that's why I had to do.
And, and uh, emergency management did build their colas in um, for the represented employee, um. And I just checked the patrol side and.
Did all the unions use what we believe would be the correct percentage?
It's in the contracts.
It is in the contract, there's nothing that.
We know what it is.
Um. And I did just check patrols and it it appears that um, she had built that budget with. With that in there, so we have some wiggle room, I believe, with the placeholder. We can, to reduce that, um.
So will the money this year go into fund balance?
No, because there's no revenue tied to it, it's just unused budget expense. So. It's not lost because it's going to reduce the deficit.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I. Well, I was talking about it, the same thing applies to twenty twenty fours, she's talking about what we're estimating for twenty twenty five. That's what, that was my question. So it's like a double goodie thing. It. When there is. Job openings and departments, you end up rather than using that cola dollars. And then they can pull from it, it just pulls that out.
It's essentially budgeting with a vacancy rate, a- actually budgeting a vacancy rate.
No, I like the way it's budgeted, I've just, I've always thought it was more than it needed to be. And I think we all thought that, but we didn't know.
Well, I think it's safe to just, I mean, in the past, we, we just budgeted all non-represented employees with, with whatever cola rate the board chose to go with. Um. Because we've only done this for two, this will be our second budget year. I think it was wise to do that, now, now we know we have a percentage, now we could play with that a little bit, but. Keep in mind, as, as positions get built or whatever direction we go, that then that would change.
Yeah, but historically, if you use sixty percent of the first year and seventy percent of the second year. You could probably budget seventy percent of two or two point five or seven point five or whatever your number is. And still put a little bit of gravy on there, but.
I mean, we've always said it, you fill every position for the entire year.
Good luck.
Well, when the economy gets, you know. Gets bad, yeah, you will be really close.
So we, so originally I had seven sixty-five in there. Um. Assuming, just assuming the, the four percent, not no one more things we're gonna go, we got CPI information. Um, and then we, we reduced it to six twenty-three-five. I would feel comfortable reducing it for further from that after having those numbers and kind of looking at the data.
That's you need or none.
This is just non-union.
That, that is union and non-union, now that I know that. What's that?
How much of that is the?
You said the unions too, so. I thought union was already baked into their.
Union is already baked in, so when I put this in here, I did not know that they were gonna do that.
This number was designed to cover.
So two and a half percent for non-represented employees for all of them, it would be a total of three eighty-six.
But now we just need to know what percentage we've used of our non-represented savings account in the last two years. And then we can kind of base that percentage off.
This year, I anticipate sixty percent.
Oh, that's two numbers, we have on the same page.
So you're saying that that. Six twenty-three, we already double budgeted. Two thirty-seven of it. So that, that needs to come straight off and then it's the discussion on the three eighty-six. And you're saying we should go sixty percent of three eighty-six.
I, I would say. Yes, I would say, I would say if they want to ratchet it down.
Is that three eighty-six at two and a half percent?
Yes. Two and a half percent.
So I'd say we put two hundred and forty thousand in there and we accept the subtraction from. Seven sixty-five. No, it's like sixty-two percent. And are we subtracting that off the six hundred or the seven sixty-five?
I'm sorry for talking about something weird, sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
Are you subtracted? So I'm just doing the math, are we subtracting it off the seven sixty-five original or off the six hundred? When we had.
Seven sixty-five, you get to the baseline union and then you can do that from there.
So I. I'm working in this column now. Any changes that are made or worked in this column, so. So I um. Read, I took off the represented and now we're at three eighty-six.
Right, and if we do sixty percent of that, that we can go to two forty roundabouts. And so, but the union's baked already into the other side. And was baked into it, so that uh, we get to actually subtract that off of our deficit.
Yes.
So we go, and it was, what, you start out seven eighty-six or six eighty-six or something?
Six twenty-three.
So we can take three hundred and eighty-three thousand off for the day. All right, let's go home.
You're welcome.
I'm fine with that number, uh, future.
Should be it below two.
Boards, if when you guys, before you present us the budget, you have your little sit down powwow with treasurer and auditor and everybody. And try to get your revenue numbers closer because. Uh, I think it scared the hell out of everybody saying four point seven million and then.
We did do that.
Quickly. And, and I think that, that number scares the heck out of people that don't understand what actually happens, so if we can get numbers closer to start with, I think it might be who. Or better sit well with whoever's sitting here.
So if the number didn't go back up, we should be at one point eight right now.
So, so we, we did sit down and, and we took, you know, the. The treasurer and the auditor and myself and we took the, the standard conservative approach and, and the. And the board wanted to go a different direction and so we've made those adjustments.
They're one point eight. I'm down to one point, one point eight, one seven. If we didn't go back up to two point five, when we were down to two point two, you'd be a last day. So. We need to find out about that grant with the, the big grant for the jail. And whether or not we need, we can ba- bake any of that in, and if we can start baking that in, that can change. That whole scenario for the jail.
I would, no, I, even if it's too many, I wouldn't say that the county's only eight fifty now. Cause you're gonna have to add so much more.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be over time. Let's uh, let's take a look at what is the, what is the jail budget?
Actually, if you don't want to say your great ideas, they probably are great ideas, you're just pretty sad.
So we've got two point two eight. Twenty twenty-five, two point two eight one. And if, and then what is the um, jail commander, what did we put in that for wages and benefits? So one forty. So you'll be able to subtract one forty-eight, three, six, or one forty-one. Off the sheriff, if that money's supposed to move over.
What was budgeted in, for this year, are you talking about, like twenty-four budget?
Twenty-five budget.
Budget, oh.
Double budgeted. It's double budgeted right now, it's double booked. It'll come out of the administration budget. It'd come out of the administration budget and into this. So. So in essence, we went from. Two point two eight one minus one forty.
Jake, so how much are you theoretically removing for this admin person?
You're talking about this one?
I said theoretically.
We're not removing it, we're keeping.
That's why we look at it.
Two one four one, and we were at one point eight. So we started this year with one point eight for the jail, correct? And that does not include the wages of the person. So we went from one point eight to two point one four one. That also, one point eight did not include the, uh, didn't include the supplemental, didn't include the medical, where the medical is, didn't include all of that. So, where we're at right now on the jail, I guess my, my question is gonna be, is this two point one four one a logical?
He may have built in some of the medical that we knew of when we built the budget, the recent hundred and forty-seven thousand may not be in there.
So I have two point three currently, after some adjustments.
Oh, two point three.
That's twenty twenty-four.
No, that's twenty-five. After some workshop adjustments. I have a hundred thousand dollars at, um, inmate medical. And a hundred thousand dollars of professional services, which was that medical portion that we added in, um, after our first discussion. Cause it was originally the, the fifty, uh, and we increased it to.
And so that should take us through the first half of the year, and then when eleven fifteen kicks in, they should have their own medical coverage again covered, so that'll go away. Hopefully, the, the, the other grant will be able to be a revenue to reduce that down some. We just gotta figure out where, when that revenue is supposed to come, how much it's supposed to be, and if we bake that in here, that'll have, make a, a good impact, I think, on our.
Yeah, I do not have, the only revenue, and I was speculating, which is dangerous, but, um, there are conversations that need to be had, um, in regards to contracts with, with cities too. The board needs to, um, start those discussions at some point in time. And under.
I'm glad I'm not gonna be here.
So, um, under our current contracts with.
Medical.
Yeah, um, I have it, um. It reads as though in past practice has been that, um, that the county covers the, the medical, and then is to bill the cities for, for that. Um, so, there's no revenue line, so I, for that reimbursement, so I added those and just kind of spitballed some really.
Where does it go today? What does it go under?
That's not how the last couple of years have been operating, so that's part of the, been part of the, um, issue with, with KVH and, and whatnot, so. I'm not sure if that practice has changed as of today. So, um.
So, this will be at least six months of twenty-five where we'll need to bill. And so you put a revenue on.
I, I just, I just threw a very small revenue number until we, we know what that practice is gonna look like. Plus, with that initiative coming through, I didn't wanna inflate much of anything in there. Um, I went off of current contract numbers, um, for the cities. And what historically has been budgeted for the DOC.
Do we bill DOC?
Um, I mean, there's six thousand dollars of revenue that's been received this year. Twenty-three actuals was a little over twenty thousand, twenty-two actuals was sixteen thousand.
That revenue is gonna be the nightly bed.
That's the nightly.
Reimbursement for medical.
And, and I could be wrong, cause. I could be wrong, cause I've had five hundred conversations about this, but I believe when I talk to the person from DOC, I think the understanding is they don't get billed for actually every night they stay here. Nor do they bill the county every time we send an inmate to Walla Walla's hospital, the penitentiary hospital, or one of the other penitentiaries, for someone that needs a high level of care. The, it, it balances out, and so they, it's, it, it, it's a good relationship.
I'm sure it's definitely in our favor.
I, I, I do think so. But, when we have our own medical staff, and we don't need to send somebody to the hospital of Walla Walla, because we have a higher level of medical here or access to it, um, potentially, that could be offset, and they discussed that with me as well, they, they know that as well, so.
And did we build in any increase in the medical staff? What did we do there?
Nothing.
So that'll all be done through supplemental.
And I, I can talk to Jose today about his recommendation for staffing. What did he say when he was here? Island County spends almost a half a million on medical, and I don't know if that includes billing from the hospitals as well as.
Censoring out of the two million dollar grant they have.
Some of it.
That's the mean, I can't wait till we finally get a presentation on what this two million dollar grant is and what it actually covers. To see if it actually covers anything we're already providing in our one point eight. Or if it's more on top of that.
And then back to the, back to the discussion that can, seems to continue to happen bits and pieces. The county that we used as a boilerplate, the most recent county, I think, to do this. And I, I've had this discussion with the sheriff a few times, as, in theory, is when they moved the jail to its own department, the org chart went with it, and any staffing that was paid for out of the sheriff, they had positions that were partly paid for patrol, split a position with corrections, corrections with patrol, they just cleaned it up. And the position followed the department and the funding wherever it came from, followed the position, so it was, it was just a.
That's only lots.
Not a taking, it's just when you move a department and you move the person to charge, you move the money with them wherever that money happened to reside. Um, cause, so, I mean, that's the theory.
So, how are we going to get an update on that grant, pos- that grant? And when that can kick in, and we can put it into the budget, we need an update on that.
I can, I talked to Director Quinn about it the other day. Carmen, I think, is the lead, but both of them have been working on it for quite a while, so be one or both of them, I suspect, who would be able to give you.
Could we get that on the agenda for the next week or so?
Uh, Director Quinn, I don't think's available, Carmen, I don't know. Whether, whether, uh, Aaron can zoom in, cause I think she's, um, at a conference.
Oh.
Or will be at a conference.
Eventually, whenever we do get that presentation, I mean, others can get it.
Of course, we shouldn't do that till we know we're gonna get it, and, and they said we wouldn't even know till April, I mean, it's worth.
There's, there's a guarantee, so you get it put into your tranche, or your, your cohort. And then, yeah, you, you're set for it, but we can at least budget for, cause it's not, it's not gonna backfill you, right? So you, it's not starting at the beginning of the year. Unless we could get an agreement with the state that it, we could be eligible for the beginning prior to it, which the state could potentially do, but we'd have to lift some, pu- put some political capital into doing that.
I understand you wanting to budget for that being in place for half a year. But again, I'm gonna go back and say, I'm not budgeting for any of it until I actually see if it's what it covers. How much of that is a new program we're putting in, how much of that is existing expense? I'm not just gonna rely on word of mouth when somebody don't. I, I need to see it penciled out, and I heard this grant exists, but that's about all we know.
Oh, that's exactly what I'm trying to get set up.
Right, I'm just trying to make sure that somebody has. Be able to answer that question.
I can talk to Carmen and see if she's.
And maybe the, what you do is talk to Carmen, and, and if Carmen doesn't have it, we can get a presentation from the state.
That, that would be a good.
Yeah.
That would be far more from the horse's back.
I mean, I've seen some of the documents on the deliverables, it's pretty extensive, but I, I don't know if I've seen the whole, the whole thing.
That, that would be ideally fabulous, anything the state has, if the state's willing to do is.
Or even barring that, somebody like Jose who's got the grant, and has been using the grant, might be able to give us some information. I'll start with Carmen, and then we'll talk about the state and.
They would be perfect for me, cause I would trust myself. As knowledgeable, without, as never testing something because they've never done.
I'm just sad that we didn't get part of the first cohort, cause that would've been money we could've saved.
Just sad, didn't accept grants for years.
You got another big one? I mean, we're on a roll, it's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, Jeff, back there, um, they readjusted their numbers for the cola, cause they originally had budgeted the four. Readjusted it to two point five, it results in about ten thousand dollars worth of landfill savings.
That was my question when I asked if they budgeted the cola and already packed it in, whether they put it at the right percentage, and we need to double check that they just. Everybody put it in the four, otherwise that could end up.
One point seven nine.
Down, there's at least one more department that might've missed that one.
Do we know if the sheriff put it in a two point five?
Yes.
We, we pulled up one position and checked the formula, so.
Okay, what about public works?
I couldn't tell you because the, like, the road department's all budgeted in that one bar's number.
Yeah, they don't break it out like.
Send an email down there while we're thinking about it, just confirm with them that they make sure they put their caller number at two point five, and give us any updates that are needed.
He can't forward, you better give him that.
May I? So for clarification, the four percent was what we had to use at the time we submitted the budget, we didn't make a mistake. The two point five is the information that was gained after the CPI came out. And we made those adjustments just today.
Cautiously, not knowing whether you got the data got it.
That's what, that's the direction we've always been given, the, uh.
It's taken by.
Well.
With public works and everybody else, because.
Yeah, that, that was, if the CPI had been high, we're contractually obligated for the four percent as the high mark for those represented employees. So that's what we budget for, as an expense. And then when we find out the real number, that can be adjusted back down, and that's what happened today, after we got the real numbers from finance.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification.
You're welcome.
No, he didn't do that.
He was in the room, so he's definitely partially culpable.
Picking on your generators, yeah.
I wasn't. Jake was.
I'm prepared to present on the generators as well.
Yeah, why don't you go off on generators like you do on air conditioners?
Um, because generators on a nine-one-one tower, if they fail, some are nice. Uh, if an air conditioner goes out, you just get inconvenience. Uh, one's life and death, and one is something you didn't have fifty years ago, so get over it. We all went to school and had to open the windows of school building, and now the windows don't open, cause we all have. Right? Tell me you had an air conditioner in this school, I'd wear it.
I'd like to sell my idea of how come to your. If he hits the school. Yeah, pretty much it.
You were one of the number of. So, that answers why.
How you doing? Good? It's not with you today? She's, she, we were just in court together, she said she was coming, so. I, she seems to tell the truth most of the time.
When the plaintiff, he took a turn to the parking lot, failed.
Okay, can see. So, do you want me to sit up there? And, okay, she can, I'll figure out where to sit then. I don't know anything about her budget, I'm not really here to talk about that, so if that's what we're here for. Okay. I'm just here to hold her hand. Yes, if I would do that. Yeah, yeah, just finished. So, um, well, I don't wanna, you, you all have had a long day as well, so I, I could probably jump into the issue that I, that I did wanna discuss, which was the contract for probation services with the cities. Um, as it sits now, the probation services are provided to the three cities without any, um, reimbursement from the cities. Um, the probation services amount to both, um, monitoring a defendant after they're sentenced, as well as monitoring, uh, people who are charged with crimes in a pre-trial monitoring setting. Um, pre-trial monitoring would come up with someone, maybe if they had a, uh, a DUI charge, and so the probation department would be engaged in weekly meetings with that person, subjecting them to random testing to make sure that they're maintaining sobriety. Um, so again, those services are provided to Goldendale, White Salmon and Benjen without perfect reimbursement from the cities. We've been talking, I, I wanna say for thirty years, but it's really only probably been three, uh, about changing that dynamic and, and having the, the cities, um, provide, uh, payment for those services. Um, and so we're at a point now, having it gone back and forth between, uh, the probation department and, um, and, uh, some assistance from me and, uh, prosecuting attorney, I'm just talking about the city thing now. And, um, I think we're at a point now, we have an, we have agreements that we have prepared to present to the cities, um, that have everything in them with the exception of what they're gonna pay. Um, and I can't speak directly to, uh, which now reminds me, I didn't say who I am, I'm Jeff Baker, I'm the West District Court Judge, sorry about that. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, that was, that's embarrassing for everybody else. Uh, anyway, so I'm the West District Court Judge, so I. Uh, anyway, so I'm the West District Court Judge, so I can only speak to what the um. Cities. And I guess the other reason why I may have done that. I have been in court since nine o'clock and so this is uh, not without a break. So. If I say something inappropriate, which I've already done, if I say if I say more inappropriate things, I apologize in advance. But anyway, I've spoken with both the city attorney for White Salmon and Bingeon and uh, they've expressed to me that they would very much like to continue. Using uh, probation services. Um, provided by the county. They don't want to do that on their own, create their own probation department, do any of those other things. So. And they do uh, acknowledge that they've been getting these services for free for quite some time. And I they have in the past, in the long distance past, considered doing this on their own, which they could do. Um, but I think that um, as a credit to the person sitting to my right. Uh, they feel that the services that are provided by the county are. Um, top notch and very useful for their uh, law enforcement purposes. And so they would very, I think they will. I don't think we'll have a problem with that. We may have some negotiation with whatever that cost is. And we're going to ask Courtney to try and come up with a way to start that process by. Coming up with a number. It's it's. I guess I should say it's not going to balance the county budget. It's not going to be a big number. Sorry, sorry, sorry. It's we're not finding a whole trove of money under a rock here. But it's 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 appropriate for them to be paying for this. We've discussed also. The reimbursement rate for the judicial services as well in the past. Um, and those things have been going kind of on a parallel track. This is one that I think is. Uh. This is just adult probation services. It's not. Uh, rejiggering or reconfiguring the payment for the court services. It's just probation services.
I have. Yeah.
We have the previous three years averages. We just need to put that in in a in part of the contract where. We can average out the last three years and then you would pay your proportional share of the overall cost based on that.
Well, with the only proviso that we had a three year pass total three years ago, we need to do that. We've been on this project long enough that Courtney might need to update.
Re note. Yes.
We're not seeing a substantial change in the number of uh, defendable clients that uh. Courtney's dealing with from the cities. I think it's been barely. Uh, might be a little bit of an uptick, but not a substantial uptick.
I think, yeah, there's a little bit of uptick, I think, um, here and there. Um. Um, but they they seem to average out the same.
And and so I the other thing I would say is I think that of the three cities, the. The two cities on the west end have a a smaller proportion of the. Case load than Goldendale.
But it still comes out to about thirty percent of your overall cases, correct?
I can't. I can't answer. I can't answer that at the moment. I haven't looked at those that.
I know. It's been a while.
But, yeah, it it is a enough of a proportion to. Definitely look into. So.
So the other thing to know, for instance, uh, where there's a second time today, I've used the example, so I probably need to find new examples. But we had someone in court with us this week who has been uh, his case has been pending for uh, almost a year. And he's been on pretrial monitoring uh, for a an alcohol related offense that entire time. So he's been checking in with Courtney. On a weekly basis and getting tested weekly and we've not seen any. Recidivism, no problem with this person. That's the kind of service that that the that she provides. And but also for that person, that is a check in and someone else in their life who is saying. You shouldn't be drinking. And so I think it also. Creates the momentum for the change for that person. In addition to what we benefit as citizens of having that person not. Engaging in alcohol related offenses. That person gets the benefit of having the potential to get that momentum to get going. So that's the pretrial monitoring part of this.
Your trial probably take a year for like kind of.
Uh, they can't.
You know, I I don't get a court off and I just think speedy trial, you know, a month or two.
Right.
You're just.
Well, the problem with the city cases, they don't. This is a city case. It's not a a county case. The county cases move a little bit more quickly because. They have a more regular docket than the city. The cities, that's part time uh. Prosecutors, so the cases can languish a little bit, but it's not unusual. So, um, that's part of the the side that I think we don't see as much uh, or people aren't as familiar with is the work that. Is done. The other thing that that allows uh, a judicial officer like myself or Judge Hanson to do is to say. If, for instance, I have someone who may be engaged in behavior that is. Drug or alcohol influenced and um, I know that they're going to be monitored. Then I can feel confident to release that person from custody, knowing that they're going to be checking in. So I've had situations where people have. You know, needed to needed to work, made a mistake, have a have a good paying job, want to, you know, keep food on the table and a riff over their head. And they need that. They need to do that. They don't have a a job that they can just take off for while they sit in jail. Um, and if the circumstances indicate, then I can have that person. Released from custody and check in uh, even multiple times in a week with probation and be tested. And then if they have a problem, then they can go back to custody, but it gives a person a chance to. To not have to be languishing in jail while their case is being prepared. Um. And again, then gives all of us the confidence that they're going to be monitored and we know whether they're going to be using drugs or alcohol. The the testing regimen that Courtney can employ is um. Significant uh, and um, sophisticated enough that. If she sees someone on a weekly basis, even for alcohol, she's able to detect if they've been using alcohol. So. Uh, that was always a surprise. It's always a surprise to uh, in fact. Sounds like it's surprised you. It was to me that she can do that.
Oh, yeah, I know. And talking about the tournament. Um. How's apple stand your system?
So we do. It's called.
You don't tell me if you don't want all the people to know.
Um, I think.
No, we wanted to know. That's the whole point.
So we do um, uh, and it's called an ethylfluoro nit test. It's which tests is. Tests for the metabolite of alcohol within your body and um, that can test for alcohol consumption uh, up to nine uh, five days. So five days prior to it can tell us that. Um.
So the other part about that that you should know that she's not going to say is that if she has that test and finds that and there can be other. Influences and so forth that may affect that. But if she then turns that person given. Her persuasive ability and says, have you been drinking? They're going to admit nine times out of ten because they're not going to lie to this face. Because they don't.
Oh, and the reason they're probably testing is they're not the smartest secretary was to begin with, so.
Well, I don't want to diminish uh, Courtney's uh, skills, but Courtney develops a rapport with folks. That allows people to engage with her and be honest with her even even to their own detriment. So. Um, again, I don't think that. I mean, we should probably be saving this pitch for when we talk to the cities, but I think they know already that that we have a we have a really uh. Top notch probation department. Um, and and we just had a, uh, we have. Uh, Eddie Vega, who's just uh, passed uh, his whatever that was.
Academy.
Academy. So we've got him on board and he's doing a great job as well. Has a lot of rapport with people. As you may appreciate, sometimes uh, people are engaged in the criminal justice system for a lengthy period of time. Eddie was a corrections officer for a long period of time and knows a lot of people. Uh, who engage in crime and knows people related to people engage in crime. And that's a a tremendous resource that he has and also. It has adopted and I think is well suited to the the same. Um, philosophy that Courtney's developed at the department of, you know, being fair but firm. So. She should. So that's what we're working on. I don't know if that if I'm. If this is Courtney's budget meeting entirely, but I just wanted. I was here to.
So thank you. Thank you for the update. And I remember where we left it. Uh, we just spent what a year and a half working on getting the. Uh, court side of it with the cities. And I believe Commissioner Zoller said you'd step up to the plate to do the negotiations with the cities with this. And if you guys have had more conversations since that time and we're to that point and you can run the numbers. Potentially, we could because they're going into their budget cycle too, and we don't want to miss out on a budget cycle where they'll come up and say, well, we didn't budget for it. Sorry. We we need another year and we need the money. And if it's upwards of thirty percent of your budget, that would be a really nice thing to come to the table with.
So I don't. I'm not uh, two things on that. Also, what we want, what we'd like to do is start with the west end cities. For a couple of reasons. One, both of those prosecutors have been there for a long period of time. One of them is actually going to retire at the end of the year, and so we want to get in there before. Uh, that happens and Mr. Fitzgerald, who's the uh, Goldendale city attorney, has just been doing that for. A year, although he's got extensive experience. Um, as a as a prosecutor and a defense lawyer, but uh, both. I've had personal conversations with both the city attorneys for Bingeon White Salmon, and they know that this is in the offing, and I think that that. That'll make that an easy, we're hoping, an easy process.
Like the last one.
Well.
I think it'll go well.
Do you see a dollar figure that's more than five?
Well, again, the the option always is, which is in 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 each case, but I think. Uh. Uh. Just to be completely transparent with it, I think it's easier for them to set up a court and get a new judge than it is to get. Someone like Courtney to do their probation services. So I think they, this is a, this is a more valuable ass. This is the more valuable asset of the two assets that we have here. This is the asset. This is not the asset, but. Uh, I think that they're gonna, they're gonna want to do that. And and it and the amount of work associated with doing their own probation services for both the attorneys. And and other people would be substantial. And then again, as I say. The pretrial monitoring services that she provides to both her clients and the cities is is invaluable.
Well, I I guess I would just say that we all know this has been going on forever. And I thi- I I'm very thankful for your involvement because I think your involvement not only is going to speed it up on our end. But also speed it up on the city's end. Um, being as respected as you are with them. So I I appreciate your involvement.
Well, and and I and and I I guess I do. I thank you and I need to a apologize a little bit about. How it may have gotten delayed, but part of that was for me to make sure that I wasn't stepping on anybody's toes and. Um, making sure that it was done uh, properly from a whole. Uh, you know, separation of powers perspective as well. And uh, the one thing we did know as part of getting this done is that. We couldn't ask Courtney to do one more thing uh, than she's already doing. So that's why Judge Hanson and I stepped in and and took this back over. So.
Yeah, as soon as you get your numbers and you want to meet, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, we would.
I'll let you know when you're ready.
Yeah. Well, we're ready anytime, aren't we?
Yes.
We are. We're ready anytime as well. After she gets the numbers.
Okay.
She'll have by Monday. She'll work on this weekend.
Okay. Of course you will.
He keeps adding more duties.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Do you have anything budget, budget numbers, cash flow?
Um.
So I went after we had talked about revenue and revenue sources. I had shot that information over to Courtney to see. Um, if she wanted to take a look at the mental health and chemical dependency um, sales tax. If any part of that um, could be used if the board chose to go that direction in adult probation.
I would just say that in when I reviewed it, um, it does say it any county that imposes that sales tax. Tax is required to establish and operate a therapeutic court component for drug dependency proceedings. Um. We don't actively have that. In the works at the moment, that is something that uh, both east and west district court hope um, to have up and running at some point, but we were. We came into a roadblock when we don't have a treatment provider for outpatient um, services for our county. And so um. So now that I think behavioral health is starting to get up and running, um, it sounds like they will be able to start doing more assessments uh, spec. For the majority of my population, which is uh, DUI cases. Um, right now they can't do that. Um, but. I'm hopeful by the end of the year they'll be able to do that um, just because of reporting purposes for DOL. Um, and they had to do drug screenings themselves um, for the assessment. So. Uh, fingers crossed by the end of the year they'll be able to do that for us and then they'll be able to have more um, individuals involved in outpatient treatment services. And then we would be able to. Be able to do that.
First step, and then we would need to look at this and figure out what the cost would be. To administer this new court thing you're talking about to find out whether the revenues would.
Yeah, the therapeutic court would have a couple of steps to it. One would be to get buy off from the prosecuting authorities to say that they want to participate in a therapeutic process. A therapeutic court, but as far as the resources from the judicial standpoint. Um, and also from probation services, it wouldn't be adding to our workload necessarily. We might have um, additional meetings. We'd be monitoring these folks a little bit more. That would probably be less of a burden on probation. It might add. You know, a half day docket for east and west district courts to do something like that. I don't want to speak for Judge Hanson, but. I would have the capacity to do something like that and would like to see that we do that. But again. Those are some of the some of the steps to get there, uh, starting with. Because if we don't get to decide if a case gets put into therapeutic court, it has to be uh. Put there by the prosecuting authority to do that. So that's not entirely our decision.
Do we know? Are we? Are we an outlier without having a therapeutic court? Do most rural counties in the state have therapeutic courts?
I I wouldn't say most rural. Um, I know there are quite a bit of therapeutic courts, especially in the bigger cities because they have more access to resources. Um.
Therapeutic court. Is this is this drug court or is this something else?
Yeah, it'd be a drug court.
It could also be DUI court. It could be mental health court. It could be veterans court. Um. It's a specialized. Court program.
So it it's a specialized court program, but it it. You're either going to go to your regular docket or you go to this. So your regular docket would go down and you just. Have this as a part.
So part of the part of the emphasis behind the therapeutic court movement is to do a couple of things. One is to free up time on the docket. For cases that probably shouldn't be there, but would be amenable to having people get engaged in treatment as opposed to. Straight punishment. So it 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 separates the docket and creates time for that. The other is to. Take a different approach to criminal justice, which is to look at um, treatment for folks as opposed to punishment as well. And so in the larger, and I've had these conversations with uh, Mr. Canal about this. The larger areas have sort of the larger cities and. More populated areas have sort of a a critical mass of people that would qualify for something like that that makes the effort involved in setting up the court. Monitoring the people, doing all these procedures makes it worthwhile. We're not maybe at that point, but we don't. We haven't. We haven't gotten to a a serious conversation about it. Um. And in some ways, as you can appreciate. Since you're all. Part of a rural community, we sometimes do things uh, in a rural community that we don't call a therapeutic court. But are akin to a therapeutic court. And so we have time. To visit with people, get to know their lives a little bit better, fashion remedies that make sense. We've we've started uh, in uh, I know in west district court, I can't. I think it's the same in east district court to look at. Handling uh, driving while suspended charges differently. That's come from the prosecutor's end to say. We're not going to criminalize that. We're going to treat that as a civil infraction. Um, not in every case, but we're going to look at that and do that. That's something that's been new and that. That frees up that frees up time on the criminal docket, but then those folks for me migrate to my traffic docket. So I'm still dealing with those people, but then on those situations, then what I do is I work with those people individually and say. What's it going to take to get your license reinstated? How can we do that? Work on that. Come back in two weeks. Let's talk about it again. So it's. It is like a therapeutic court, but it's not denominated as such, or it's or it would be. It would be like a a therapeutic court devoted to driving while suspended cases. Um, and so we're doing some of this. On an ad hoc or informal basis, but it would be nice, particularly if we had funding available to look at doing this more formally. And then we might have. We might be more effective.
Yeah, and if and I've looked and talked to um. Washington State Healthcare Authority and in fact, we were awarded some grant significant grant money for drug court uh, therapeutic courts. Um, but we weren't able to get it up and running just because of the resources and where we're at as a county as a whole at the moment. So we're still um.
Got to be a dollars.
We might have. We might have um the, I believe we will have the um that available to us potentially in the future, once we get outpatient treatment services available. Um.
The therapeutic court movement is really something within the last, say fifteen years, but it's not going away. It's, it's just, it's gaining momentum and adherence, and it's growing all across the state and the country. So we, if we're not doing it now, it's in our future. And, and so to, to keep our ear to the ground and keep looking for these funding sources is something we should do. Because I think we might, we, we, we may get there.
And what I would say is that um with drug court or therapeutic courts, um, it does, I think the only thing that it would increase would be probation's um time, because typically it means they have to check in more often, they have to do more drug testing. Um, it is my belief or hope, um, and I, and I believe the judges too, um, that uh with the um revenue brought in from the cities for probation services, that that would fund our vacant position. Um, so ever since I moved up and as director, um my old position has not been filled. Um, so I've been running a full caseload plus running the department and a grant and everything else. So I, I am still very much me in need of um my old position to be filled because yeah, this week has been interesting with short staff and courts and clients and all the things.
So for instance, if we're short staffed and we only have um Courtney available when we had uh Eddie at training, then if she has to monitor uh a UA, that becomes problematic for some of her male clients. And so that could be a situation that could be rife for someone uh faking a, a drug test. If you need a diagram, I can give that to you. But I, I think we, we all understand what I'm talking, I hope we understand what I'm talking about. In other words,
I've had that situation.
Courtney is not able to go to the bathroom.
We understand.
Watch the uh, her male clients provide the best man. I knew I had to explain it for you. Everyone else got it, but you're still, you're still, you were still slow on the uptake, so I had to reach out.
I mean, some still try to offer.
Now, that's, I mean, that's just something that we've, I mean, and she says busy week. That's something that we've actually dealt with this week. And so yeah, it's, it's, it's tough when it, when they're short staffed and.
Is your, is your, sorry. I had my mic up. Is your thought of replacing your position a thought with replacing it as a full time or a part time and see how that goes? Kind of a scenario. Just try, I mean, we haven't been presented with anything, but I'm just trying to see your thought process.
I think there's uh plenty of um caseload numbers to support full time.
Again, at this level, thankfully, dollars are dollars, right? So again, if I have a robust probation department and I can release someone out of jail to be actively supervised, that's going to save money on one place, but cost money somewhere else. Uh, because we're going to take someone out of jail and the cost of having that person in jail, have them back to their life, but being supervised to make sure that they're complying with the requirement that they stay sober and law abiding. And so it's, it's, it's difficult to sort all that out. I, I wouldn't even know if we could do that, but there's, there's advantages to that, to having that be fully staffed because ultimately that's what we want to do. I mean, I tell people uh all the time, my court is not really uh dealing a lot with um evil people. I deal with people who make poor decisions. Um, a lot of times because of mental illness and addiction. And so jail is not necessarily the best place for them. Uh, sometimes it's absolutely necessary and called for, but there are opportunities to get people to be actively supervised and be law abiding and not uh incarcerated. So.
Good.
Oh, as far as that goes, I, I had a couple of issues in your budget numbers, your travel. Um, looks like it's going from fifteen down to a thousand, but it looks like you don't spend anywhere close to that. So I just wanted to make sure you were okay with your dropping of that.
I am, just because um prior to uh there was um well, historically um before my time, uh, the chief probation officer had um the designated the county car for the department. He drove it all the time. Um, uh, which is completely fine. Um, but I had other in probation officers that had to drive to the west end or do home visits. If that vehicle was already in use, we would have to use personal vehicles and then get reimbursed. So um we've been doing car pulling um and the gap of fuel for uh car pulling back and forth to court on Wednesdays have not um.
I, I, you had me at home.
Okay.
Or a carpool.
Yeah, okay.
Probation, uh, the professional services are a line. Can you give the public a?
Okay, the professional services, just this, the straight one? Okay.
Well, it's a three hundred two forty thousand.
Yes, because uh the commissioner, you you guys authorized the purchase of the Tyler Enterprise uh database system. So that followed, fell under the professional services. Um, it's not a like quote unquote, software, because it's, we don't have, it's cloud based. Um, it's a professional services agreement. Um, it was a one time cost, so it's only for uh, I built that in to twenty twenty five. Yeah, I built it into twenty twenty five's budget because I hadn't uh received uh confirmation from the board on whether or not we could do that now or later. So I built it in as a protection for twenty twenty five. It's going to be, it's going to be pulled out at twenty twenty four.
It's going to be done this year. So technically we can remove that from that bar's number and save us forty thousand dollars from Jake's map over there.
Yeah, forty thousand seven hundred and seventy three.
Whatever.
Yeah, you're sure, you're sure.
So if you can figure out that number, give with Jen to adjust that.
So do you, do you want me to take it down to the twenty eight hundred? Or do you want to just give me a number later?
You give us a number.
I think I will, I'll verify the twenty hundreds, but I think so, but I'll, I'll double check with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Not that you save this fifty grand, but you save the fifty grand niche.
Yes.
That was the only other thing I had in mind. I liked that.
Uh, my only just uh thought that go, going over this real quick. Um, we, I have been reevaluating our um drug testing laboratory. Um, we, just because what we thought was going to be cost effective by doing instant drug tests and then sending them off if they're positive, um it's turning out not to be cost effective because we're finding that the instant drug tests, they're just a screen test. It'll say positive or negative, but there's a lot of room for error on those. Um, so sometimes people will be like, well, I I used yesterday and it comes up clean. And then I'm like, well, that's not right. So I had to send it in, right? Uh, and then it, it tells me what I need to know.
Kind of like in COVID tests, not necessarily.
It's not not necessarily accurate, right? Um. So when we're doing that, we're paying for the cups, plus we're paying for the laboratory fees. So we're looking at another agency that was raved to us by Grant County probation. And um what's really great for us is that they, um, this agency interfaces with Tyler's system. So once they get the results, it already pushes to our system. Um, so it's less work for my staff to input that information and look for it. It's just kind of generated into the, into the system.
Yeah.
Looked at pricing yet, is it comparable and?
It actually would save us like three hundred dollars a month in lab, in fees. If we just sent them all in and not did instance, just, and it's um two day shipping, uh, which is included. Um, and it's like ten dollars and some odd cents a test. But um the big thing that I appreciated was that virtual, virtual or telephonic testimony on UAs was free. It was all included in the cost. I mean, they said, however, if you want, if the court wanted them in person, it costs fifteen hundred bucks. There's that. But typically.
But having, not having the instant, isn't going to change the way you operate your business?
It, it would not. Um, we, we used to, many years ago, we all, that's all we did was just send in tests. Um, and the reason why we changed is because they were taking up to three weeks to get results back. Um, we would only anticipate maybe a week.
Well, and, and the nature of you don't work for me, work for him. And if he likes that plan, don't pass me any money. Let's get up on that.
Well, I'm still, I'm still running the numbers and double checking, but if that were to happen, um, the marijuana, the supplies for marijuana um would not be I wouldn't be using that as much because the supplies would be ordering like the instant cups. We wouldn't be ordering those. Um, we would just be sending them strictly to the lab, which would be, would fall under professional services marijuana dollars. So you might see some differences if that were to happen. But I'm trying to find the most cost effective, yet um without with still having the best quality.
And we want to, and, and the quick result.
Yes.
Quick result is key to the process.
Fixing the process, right? So I guess from my perspective, I didn't have any other questions other than that large budget item. And we got that fixed. So that's a big savings. The only other big lever we can pull is a conversation with the cities and getting that done as quickly as possible. And if we can start to, and I remember finally starting to remember our own conversations when you were asking for additional um help in, in your office. You know, we came down to, well, if you need the additional help, we've got to have the revenue side because we're still one point four or one point seven four nine million in the hole right now. And so adding staff is not where we're at at the current moment.
What's their funding?
Now, if you get a grant for it, totally different.
Easier said than done.
I understand.
Well, we'll keep working on it.
Yeah.
And we'll start with the talking to the cities and we'll start on the west end as soon as we can. If you're willing to help us, that would be great.
Anytime. That'd be great.
Good.
Any other question?
Good.
No, thank you.
Great. Thanks.
We'll be here for a few more hours, but we can stick around for the town hall.
Yeah.
Judges can be a panelist.
Run, just run.
I appreciate that invitation.
Could you give me a call?
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. See ya. Bye Courtney.
Bye.
Thank you Courtney.
Thanks, Judge, for that. Officially.
Yeah, but I got you covered.
Courtney. Good thing you showed up. Yeah, that uh we might get chastised for some of the employment traces we've made over a term, at least I have. Because people wanted to retire here and she doesn't let them retire here or forced them out earlier. There's been accusations. But um that, that just to me is another one that we're way better off now than we were.
That's not our employee.
We're still the ones that maybe were charged. We're forced to change.
I have nothing to do with this.
You didn't.
I'm so glad. Courtney's a great gal.
Before six, uh, what else? Sorry, before six, what else would you guys like to do?
Eat.
I think Leon went to dinner.
For lunch and I was working on gummy bears and worms.
Yeah, I feel you. Is that why you're so calm?
The gummy bears.
Did you run out of, run out of Red Bull?
No, I told you every budget day is going to be Hawaiian shirt, keeping calm and meditated.
We'll get you ocean sound.
Special, but gummy bears. Well, I do we want to keep it open? I mean, if we can keep it so we can keep talking, but we don't have any more business. Um, we could
We could close it and reopen for town hall.
Well, that's what I was going to say. We could keep the zoom on so people can listen, but we don't need to be recording if we're just talking about random stuff all.
I, I would say don't recess just in case somebody has a brilliant idea they want to share with us.
That's what I'm saying.
But for the most part, it's going to be an hour of dead space. So I would keep the zoom on and just stop the recording.
Yeah, that's fine.
And remember the zoom is on.
You're violation by you're all sitting in the same room next to each other.
Because somebody's going to think of something and bring it up.
So everybody down there in the peanut gallery.
Um.
Zoom is going to, zoom is going to be left on.
We can turn off the camera as long as the audience. Uh, it, it keeps us legal. If somebody has an idea they want to bring up.
And then we can just leave it open because it's the same zoom and everything, right? So we can just let people live and then and then stop the recording. Yep.
I would stop the recording and once we start eating, I would uh move the camera.
Stop the video.
Oh, somebody's going to take a screenshot.
No, we're still open for a bit. So I would, I would, I would. Because that's all we're asking for right now.
Definitely not. I'm out of this.